Yeah, regular meeting of City Council for October 7th, 2013 to order. Welcome and good morning, everybody. The first item on the agenda is new councillor business. Does anyone have anything to raise or add?
Yep, I've got.
Sorry, councillor Malkinson.
That's no matter at all. Good morning, your worship.
Good morning.
It is a lovely day. Just this morning, I hoped to initiate sort of a discussion that we had begun at the last meeting. I believe councillor Parslow at the last meeting moved with the estimates on the financial implications, a report that we received from our finance staff to, well, he moved to have it shared with the public, I believe, you know, through sort of a public process. And I just sort of have been thinking in the last little while, you know, if there's more information that we can share with the public through that process as well, you know, like the, well, other, I suppose, other things that are associated with going ahead with the option that was identified by the public there. So I suppose the conversation that I was hoping to maybe initiate today was just sort of what people in, well, sort of what staff hoped to include in this process, you know, what they saw, what they were sort of hoping to bring out to the public in the next few weeks. And I suppose that's a question for our administrator. I'm uncertain how exactly he'll be able to answer it, but, yeah.
So for clarification on the fiscal gap?
No, not on the fiscal gap. We received the estimates on the costing of a pipeline and it was moved to
Okay.
take it out to the public. And I was wondering if it was just the information on the costs that council moved in the report that's going to be taken out, or whether there are going to be other things as well.
Through your worship, we had anticipated that council's direction was specifically around the report on not so much cost, because we still have no engineering
I'm sorry.
and no reliable cost estimates, but on, in terms of funding options
Yes, yes.
at a variety of potential costs. That's what we assumed would be probably rolled up into a newsletter with a survey and subject to a public meeting. But what we'll certainly be doing is bringing back a communications plan for you before we do this.
Okay. I got you.
Thanks.
Because there's, you know, a few things that run through my head that I think it's important to share with the public as we go through, I suppose, this phase two of Surewater, as it was written in the minutes here. You know, like the mandate from the province, about 50 percent of our future needs having to be met from conservation, you know, that's a big consideration for people, so. I suppose it's things like that and other things as well that I was curious about. But Jim has very adequately answered my question.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow.
As you know, I attended the energy conference and one of the, I guess, advantages of attending there that I took advantage of was to meet with our MP, Bob Zimmer. We had a long discussion over the infrastructure issues associated with our application. And I, without getting into too many details, I encouraged, was encouraged by the meeting and he certainly asked me some very good questions, which illustrated that he was on top of the overall northeast issues, which I suppose we expect him to be, but as it relates to water. And so I think it was beneficial both to him and to myself, so I just want to say that I did have that opportunity and took advantage of it.
Good. Thank you. Anything further on that topic? Thank you. Anything, any other new councillor business? Item 31 is the minutes of our previous council meetings and we have from July through to September, all five of them, we can incorporate, I'm assuming, in one motion.
I'd like to move, your worship.
Councillor Malkinson, seconded. Councillor Kenny. Are there any errors or omission in the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Was there any business arising from the minutes? Correspondence. Item 5.1, we have an email from Karen Marshall, the North Central Local Government Association, regarding an invitation to the 2015 Canada Games Sustainability Summit. This session in terms of for the north is the, obviously, the 2015 Games in Prince George. And we have an invitation to attend this summit on October 10th, 30, from 8:30 to 4:30. It's kind of tight timeframes for us and I don't know if anyone has the availability to attend on behalf of council.
Well, I have the availability, but I have no desire to attend. I was just trying to suggest that we receive this as information.
Perfect. Thank you. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Item 52, we have an email correspondence from Aaron Powell, Senior Canucks Icebreaker Tournament. They're requesting approval for a special occasion permit for their icebreaker tournament. Moved councillor Kenny. Seconded Malkinson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
We should read out the
Oh, okay, yeah, because you guys do that, don't you?
Well, many people who watch, you may be surprised
Sorry.
that some people watch these things and on the web or whatever, so they don't know what this is about, so.
You're absolutely correct.
We denied councillor Kenny the opportunity of reading.
I like to move along.
There was no recommendation.
We've got a similar one.
On the permit? Am I on the wrong thing?
Yeah.
Okay, no. No, it was just a request.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. You are, you're right.
Yeah, okay, thank you, because I thought I was doing it again. So anyway, I would like to move that we, that we agree to permit the Canucks the the
Special permit.
Special permit, special permit for their tournament for October 18th through to the 20th.
Thank you. Seconded. Councillor McFadden. Discussion.
So what did we vote on beforehand?
We didn't. We didn't.
On a fake, imaginary recommendation.
It's just, we're just to clarify it for the purposes of our guests and the media.
You bet.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And the second piece to that is item 5.3, and that's for the Senior Canucks for their special occasion permit for the 2013-14 hockey season. Councillor Malkinson.
Move to re-grant the Dawson Creek Senior Canucks permission to host a beer garden in Memorial Arena for their upcoming hockey games during 2013-2014 council season, or sorry, 2013-14 season for the dates that are said there. I don't think it's necessary for me to read them out, but, yes, in, you know, the mezzanine and in the Senior Canucks alumni room. I trust that that's in keeping in line with past practices, so.
Thank you. Move councillor Malkinson. Seconded. Councillor Wilber. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 5.4, we have a package of information from Mr. Gary Caldwell regarding safety concerns on the CNBC rail lines in the northeast. Councillor McFadden.
I would move that this letter be referred to staff for a report on those crossings that are within the city. And I don't know if this letter has gone to the regional district, but I think some of them are in our area and some are in the country. But I would refer it to staff for a report on those crossings within the city.
Thank you. Could I have a second or? Councillor Kenny.
Through your worship, none of the crossings referenced by Mr. Caldwell are in the city limits. What he is actually asking you to do is advocate to CN and to the Canadian Transportation Agency around the issues he's talking about, but they're not actually affecting crossings within your jurisdiction.
Councillor Parslow.
Well, yeah, I was wondering about the motion myself, but I would just like us to, once we've dealt with the motion on the table, just to make a specific, I'd like to make a specific motion about this, about some action rather than just a report.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated. Councillor Parslow.
Well, I was, first of all, commend Mr. Caldwell for his diligence here, his very thorough report. And, you know, in this report, he cites there are 15 railway crossings and we all cross them and we all know they're in various states of disrepair. And so that I move that this council forward a letter of support to Mr. Caldwell for his use with CN, requesting action over these matters that he raises in this report.
Thank you. Do I have a second or for the motion? Councillor Wilber. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 5.5, we have a letter from Tourism Dawson Creek regarding the city of Dawson Creek representative from the Northern BC Tourism Association. Councillor Parslow.
I'd like to move that this be received for information and refer and brought forward at a later part of a meeting under mayor's business.
Thank you. Do I have a second or for the motion? Councillor McFadden. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. So, item six is our delegations. We have a number of delegations this morning and
Your worship.
Yes, councillor Malkinson.
Forgive me if I am wrong, but don't we regularly head into regular business before we head to delegations, because they have a time at nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock for delegate.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you for helping me along. Appreciate it.
There you go.
There you go. What are you going to do?
Number one.
So, first item for 7.1. We have a report from our chief administrative officer regarding the fiscal gap work plan. Councillor Parslow.
I would like to move that council receive this report and that this council acknowledges that there is a fiscal gap in the city and directs staff to begin planning in line with the report presented by staff.
Thank you. Do I have a second or for the motion? Councillor McFadden. Discussion. Councillor Malkinson.
I am curious about the motion that councillor Parslow has just moved, your worship. I, well, I certainly do embrace a lot of the, a lot of the principles outlined in the report from our administrator, but agreeing in principle to making it the, I guess, that would, this, adopting the resolution that councillor Parslow is proposing would, in principle, make it our overriding strategic priority for 2014. Isn't that correct?
This motion makes no reference to the 2014.
Strategic priority.
It states that there is, that we acknowledge there is a fiscal gap
Mm-hmm.
and we direct staff to begin planning with the report presented at this meeting. So the planning and the actions are contained in the report. It makes no reference to the overall strategic planning of the city.
Well, it's mentioned in the report that you, forgive me here. It's mentioned in the report that significant staff effort and time would be required to get this process in place and by us agreeing to go ahead with it, well, we would, yes, yes, it's right here. The initiative is not a strategic priority of 2013 and the magnitude of the necessary activity for this initiative is such that it could only proceed if made a major council strategic priority for 2014. So it's
You see, the word is major, it doesn't say overall.
Major. Overriding in past reports, I
Questioned.
Come on, Gerry. There's a lot of stuff in the report that we can talk about as well.
Withdraw the question.
Well, I, hmm, uncertain what I think about that, but I suppose it was a certain, yeah, I apologize.
Thank you, councillor Malkinson. Any further discussion? Councillor Kenny.
Yeah, I would like more time with this than, I can't, I can't go with that recommendation right now. I definitely feel that there is more discussion required and I would like to see that discussion happen in the strategic planning session. I'm not prepared to, to start forward with the plan right now. I need to hear more.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Malkinson.
I, I do appreciate the discussion about the timeline. I also did want to talk about a few of the concepts in the report, if possible. But we've got, I suppose, the initial plans that are outlined that I suppose would help if council were to agree to this and to this work plan in principle right now, that I don't think would be too detrimental, well, I don't think would be any of a hamper in getting a start on right now. But I believe that the first timeline is, well, the first deadline for the work plan is May of 2014. Would, I suppose this is a question to staff would, agreeing to this in principle right now, advance any of the timelines that staff have proposed?
Through to administration. Jim?
Through your worship, potentially by a small amount, but probably not significantly, and there's two reasons for that. The first is the major piece of work on Shelley and her department's plate from now to May is the annual budget.
Mm-hmm.
And there is only so many hours in the day. And secondly, there's no resource allocation attending this. So what the effect of the motion would be, firstly, that there would be acknowledgement of the fiscal gap, which to date, there has been no such acknowledgement from council. And secondly, it would allow Shelley to look for efficiencies in the two tasks, the annual budget task and the larger, long-term look task. And it may well be that there would be times that she could combine her efforts on those two initiatives.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow.
Yes, I think, you know, if you study the report presented to us, that the first piece of work is the conceptual phase. In other words, if I can quote from the report, this phase requires breaking through the conceptual barriers to move forward and closing the gap. Or as the finance chairman of a major American city asks, how can we get people to see just how bad it is? I would suggest that might be true not just for the general public, for maybe some members of council as well. So the work will be purely, first phase is understanding how bad it is, which is a critical part for elected officials as well as the general public. And that work would, by this motion would acknowledge that the report and the deliberations of the chief administrative officer and the chief financial officer, bringing to our attention that there is a fiscal gap, is acknowledged by this council. At the present time, staff is operating as usual. We've had this report, they've told us about it, and we have not even acknowledged that we believe them. I believe them, for sure. And secondly, it says, let's start unfolding. The unfolding is purely, in the spring of next year, we begin to understand how bad it is. What is so earth-shattering in that? I just, if we decide it's not that bad and we can tolerate it, we can reverse direction. Or it may say, hey, yeah, we really got to deal with this, because if we truly believe that we work towards sustainability, we're not just concerned about the present needs, we're about the future needs of our citizens. And so I see this unfolding slowly, methodically, because unless the general public buy into the need, all our labors will be in vain. And so I really appreciated the report that was presented. It shows that reflects the literature on this matter, reflects the fact that we have to go slow to go far. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson.
It's not a question of belief in any of the, like I've said before, it's not a question of belief in any of the principles that are outlined in the report. I do believe that it would be good, independent of the outcome of this motion that's been moved to endorse the, making an acknowledgement of an existence of the fiscal gap and at least identify that there is significant work that needs to be done there. But I guess I'm just concerned about us all having open mind and no overriding concepts when we, when we go into strategic planning this year. You know, there's, in the social implications that are outlined in this report, there's, well, fiscal gap discussion is essentially a conversation about what the community of Dawson Creek will be like in the future. What will the quality of life be like for residents? How affordable will it be to live here? You know, I, that's a, to me, that's a really, you know, the definition of a vision, I suppose, is what quality of life do we expect to see in Dawson Creek and what kind of community do we want Dawson Creek to be in? And I think that us going ahead with that in principle, you know, where, I just want all of it to be considered at one, in one big discussion area, or in one big session, I suppose, not, you know, with no overriding concepts, you know, where everybody can bring what they want to bring to the table. I see it as, I see it as us possibly, you know, redoing our visioning process and I want everybody to be able to participate very fully in that.
Thank you, councillor Malkinson. Any further discussion?
I suppose with nothing else, your worship, I would like to move an amendment, just to make sure that I've got everything correct here. Just, I suppose the, if I could just have the motion read out, I would, I would be prepared to make an amendment after I had it read out.
Yes.
That report number 13-230 from the chief administrative officer, re fiscal gap work plan be received. Further that council acknowledged the existence of a fiscal gap in the city of Dawson Creek and direct staff to commence planning and action as outlined in the report.
So after direct staff and commence planning to go ahead, I'd like to have that struck out, that section right there. But I would like council to agree in principle to the, or acknowledge the fiscal gap and the principles that are outlined in the report. That's the amendment that I would like to propose. And I'm not certain if there's a second or fourth, but.
So can I ask for clarification in terms of removing an item from the motion? Is that appropriate or is it appropriate to add additional wording to the motion?
Well, in this case, your worship, I think the amendment is kind of contrary to the intention of the mover. And so I think you would actually to proceed as councillor Malkinson is advising, I think you'd need to dispose of the first motion and then substitute rather than amend.
Thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion? So I'm, so I am going to speak to this in terms of my own perspective on the fiscal gap and the work that's been undertaken and the direction that we as a community are looking at, considering with this work. And so from my perspective, first of all, community elects council and the mayor to demonstrate the leadership in terms of the strategic direction and the vision that the organization takes. And so in that regard, we have sustainability as a key component around our vision, our current vision. And so for me, when I chunk out, as our chief administrative officer has indicated, we first need to obviously get our budget requirements done for this year. And we have the date set for our strategic planning exercise, which will incorporate that visioning, the vision, the mission and those strategic objectives we as an organization align to, and that's set by this board. It isn't set by our administration. Once you have that clarity of vision, mission and objectives, then the operation plan, the tactics in which the organization and administration take to deliver that execution on that plan is that, is their accountability. And so to me, we need to do this work in terms of, first of all, validating, is that vision that we have today, the current vision we have as an organization? The mission is how are we going to accomplish that vision and the strategic objectives are those alignments to them? And it's, it's a little bit complex in certain regards, but once you get it, once you see it, the clarity for the organization and where we're going and how we're going to get there aligns and has to align for every person within this organization and our community and the members of our community, the citizens. And to me, I think that's our obligation in terms of understanding where is it we're going, how are we going to get there, and is sustainability the issue? And financial sustainability, as is important as any of the other services or infrastructure or any of that other stuff. And so for me, I think that's incumbent upon us to set that strategic objective, a direction and within it, as administration have outlined, for us the long-term view, not today, maybe not tomorrow, but the future. There is a fiscal issue for us and we need to have that conversation. And the strategic component for me is the communication strategy. And how do we engage the public in that direction and in that conversation and understanding where it is we're going and how we want to get there? And do they agree with that? Because if the public don't agree with it, then we don't have a fiscal gap. We got to find the issue of how do we sustain the services and the infrastructure for this community financially? That's all I have to say about that right now. So is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Next item, five, do we have time for 7.2?
Mm-hmm.
7.2, report from the Director of Corporate Administration, re the bylaw enforcement officer appointment. Councillor Parslow.
Move the recommendation that report number 13-232 from the Director of Corporate Administration, re bylaw enforcement officer appointment be received. Further, the appointment as a bylaw enforcement officer for former SBCA animal control officer, Ms. Shannon Cowell be rescinded.
Thank you, councillor Parslow. Seconded. Councillor Malkinson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.3, report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re 1608-106th Avenue Creek Erosion Concern.
I'll move the report that number 13-231 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding 1608-106th Avenue Creek Erosion Concern be received. Further, that council direct staff to proceed with repair and stabilization of the creek bank at 1608-106th Avenue by way of live staking as prescribed by Forestry Land's Natural Resource Operations.
Thank you, councillor Kenny. Seconded. Councillor Parslow. Councillor McFadden.
I'm reading in the report, your worship, where it's not the responsibility of the city to take care of a naturally occurring event along the riverbank, but then the recommendation says that we should be doing it to proceed with and repair it. So I'm just wondering, it's a bit of a contradiction there, I think.
Amendment. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the original repair was done as a result of the flooding that occurred in 2010. And it was paid for by the provincial emergency program and it was a remediation strategy for specific damage done by the flood. It didn't work, it didn't take.
didn't work, it didn't take because of the subsequent drought year. So the recommendation is that we should try that again and we should in fact apply to the emergency program for funding. We just don't know if they will pay. And so we're not seeing this, this particular incident as the normal creek bed erosion that anyone living on the creek is going to have to deal with. We see it as still related to the flood incident of two thousand and ten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. So it is nine o'clock, so we'll move our agenda back to our delegations. And we have a number of delegations this morning. So first up is item six one, Catherine Gilbertson and Cindy Gabriel from the Ministry of Children and Family Development and Janice MD from the Foster Parent Association in attendance, read Foster Family Appreciation Month Proclamation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you?
I'm a hugger.
So the proclamation I'm going to read on behalf of the city of Dawson Creek, whereas thousands of British Columbia foster families provide alternate family care for children temporarily unable to live with their families. And whereas foster families are an integral and valued part of the team of public and private professionals serving the families and children of British Columbia. And whereas foster families are asked to provide emotional support and care for children who will eventually return to their own family. And whereas fostering is a community responsibility and foster families build stronger communities. And whereas the city of Dawson Creek wishes to recognize the care, compassion, and unselfish commitment of foster families within its boundaries and surrounding area. And now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of October as Foster Family Appreciation Month in Dawson Creek. So I just want to add, in my world, there isn't anything more important than our babies. And anything you guys do to encourage the safety and safe family homes for these children is the top of the list. And so I sincerely appreciate the work you do and I'm happy to provide this proclamation on behalf of the city. So you're welcome to, do you want to say a few words? You were, that's part of the deal.
I'm not, you can just spokesman. But I do have a wonderful contingent of foster parents in the community that are opening their homes whenever the need is arises. They're very loving, giving, supportive people who see children as being most valuable asset we have in our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm a hugger.
Didn't hug me this morning.
Pardon?
You didn't hug me this morning.
Item six two, Elaine Armigas, Peace River Regional District in attendance regarding why should municipalities be involved in invasive plants and noxious weeds? Good morning, Elaine.
Good morning, everybody. So, good morning. I'm, I'm going to skip the trigger because I think this has a built-in timer on it. So in case it goes too fast, I'll, I'll speak from here if everyone can hear me. So I'm Elaine Armigas with the Peace River Regional District. I'm the Invasive Plant Program Manager there. And we have a committee which holds two meetings a year. And what we do is we work on a, a strategy that lists all the invasive plants within the regional district that are threatening our economic, social, and environmental values. So what you're looking at here is a picture from up north in Fort Nelson area, actually, or it's actually within the Peace River Regional District, but it's, it's ecosystems living in harmony. It's a scene that we don't see very often anymore. So, yeah. So if we look around us, we will note that there are lots of crops that are non-native to our area. We grow a lot of agriculture product here. And so those types of plants usually we need a lot of management in order to create crops. A weed, however, is, is something growing where we don't want it to be, which can be anything here in the regional district and within the municipality of Dawson Creek. These are three plants that are quite prevalent. So the one on the upper left is, sorry, I knew it was going to do that. The one on the upper left is Russian Thistle. Last week we were out and about and we found a huge infestation in an industrial yard just on the west end of town in the new subdivision. The set was chamomile that's on the bottom left. There are a fair pile of industrial yards on the, sorry, the east end of town. The industrial is on the west end. And then common tansy on the right-hand side up there is quite prevalent in the area as well. So this is kudzu from Japan. It's the weed that's said to have eaten the sels. And it, it was probably very beautiful when it was managed, but it's been, it's been left to, to do its own thing. And so it's actually breaking down the castle. So that just shows you the power of invasive plants. We believe in integrated pest management. So we don't just use herbicide, we use different tools in the toolbox. We spend a lot of time being smarter than plants. And we want to make sure that Dawson Creek stays as pristine as it is. This is a picture from Prince George. This is Marshall Bloom Thistle. They have a fairly big infestation of it down there this summer. We, we discovered one in the, sorry about this. We discovered one out in the ground birch pasture. So that's a community pasture and I'm very concerned that perhaps this plant is going to find its way into Dawson Creek around the auction marts or the veterinarian offices where agriculture people come to purchase your services that you offer here in Dawson Creek. Some of the damages that they can cause, of course, this is causing a total disruption to the ecosystem up there. I don't know how many of you have heard, but there is a plant that's prevalent on the coast called giant hogweed. When you come in touch with the sap, it doesn't hurt at first until you get out and you're exposed to the sun and then it causes those severe blisters like that. So that's very painful. Kids who use it for, for telescopes, it can cause temporary blindness. It looks a lot like our native cow parsnip. So I get a lot of phone calls telling us that we're infested with giant hogweed. And spend a lot of time telling people that it's not. It's what we have in the north is a native plant. But that shows you the power of invasive plants and what they can do to our social infrastructure. So negative economic effects. This is the orange and yellow hogweed. It can easily overtake agricultural areas and parks, anywhere where it's not intensively managed. It's pretty easy to, pretty easy to get rid of with a little bit of herbicide. But the amazing thing about this plant is if you mow it, it actually causes it to send out storms. So those are like strawberry runners that'll come from the base of the plant and then take off. So mowing is one of the worst things you can do for this plant. Here we have some pictures of within the city of Dawson Creek and on this nice little flower bed in, in someone's house, there's an infestation. Well, I believe they think it's probably beautiful. It's common tansy that's growing up the boulevard on Ninth and Ninety-First Street. And in the bottom left, there's the industrial establishment there who's had a huge infestation of setless, setless chamomile that we've, we've kind of gone after them and had them clean it up. So here's a picture of Williston Lake. Again, another beautiful ecosystem. Invasive plants are showing up there. How are they getting there? We don't know. Because this is the road that comes in from the pine pass. So it's just good to think about this stuff. This is burdock. We do have infestations of this in the city of Dawson Creek. We actually have some of it at the Peace River Regional District Warehouse. So we're working very hard to clean it up. It has a burr, so it's a hitchhiker. You, you don't need to kill the plant with herbicide. You just rake your hands with the leaves and collect the burrs because they were the inspiration for Velcro. So it's a biannual. So what happens lots of times is people are out spraying it and leaving the burrs and they're really not doing anything. So this, this is just an example of some of the knowledge that we have to share out there to the general public. Here again is the common tansy. This plant was probably brought here, well, it was brought here by the homesteaders. It was often planted around foundations because its pungent odor keeps bugs away, keeps the ants out of the foundations. We often find it where there was brothels because you can make a tea from it, which causes miscarriage. This plant is true. This plant is an excellent example of the Weed Control Act. That's how most compliance and enforcement actions were done here in the past. And this plant is here, it's prevalent. We find it in the middle of the bush. We're not sure how it gets spread. We're very afraid that this will be the plant that ate the north. And currently, we are not even authorized to do a weed notice with this plant through the Weed Control Act because provincial legislation moves way slower than invasive plants. This is a daisy. Lots of people love daisies. I have a campaign called Down with Daisies because they are setless chamomile, oxide daisy, shasta daisy. Shasta daisy is a cross between a horticulture daisy and oxide daisy. And when people don't cut it and it gets out, it mixes with the oxide daisy and it begins its own loose strain. So we actually have an infestation of shasta daisy south of Tumbler Ridge. I've worked very hard with that municipality. Over the winter, they're going to be working on a bylaw so that they can manage infestations within their, their municipal limits. And this is our favorite plant, Canada Thistle. It's not native to Canada, so we are trying to re-tag it as creeping thistle. When you see an infestation like this, there's probably about eighty percent of it is under the ground. And so we, we've learned that the best time to treat this plant is right now. People are skeptical, but I'm having more and more people call me up and say, I'm sure glad you told me when to treat my creeping thistle because it's gone. We do have a biocontrol which is eating the seed, the seed heads and keeping the fluff that's flying around from, from having vital seeds on it. And that's thanks to Jill Coates days for those who grew and were hurt. So what I'm here about today is to talk to you about your, the invasive plant program, wanting to work together with the city of Dawson Creek. The poster on the left is one that I put together that I would really like to take and deliver to the industrial oil and gas offices on your east, southeast end of town, which are all quite infested with setless chamomile. I know you have a bylaw. I know that you often will go out and issue a notice to clean up for unsettling premises where plants are more than thirty centimeters tall. But as I said, with hogweed, that's the wrong treatment and it is with setless chamomile, too. The picture there of setless chamomile on the poster, that plant, once that flower is visible, you have vital seeds. So when you mow it, you're actually exacerbating the problem. It needs to be handpicked, put in garbage bags. We leave tipping fees at the landfills for private land. It comes in in clear plastic bags. So we really want to clean that up and help you prevent spread onto your own jurisdictions within the municipality of Dawson Creek. The other really awesome thing we've done is on the right-hand side, you see a best practices for managing invasive plants on oil and gas operations. That's booklet that we put together last winter. And so we're going out into the oil and gas industry encouraging them to clean up their invasive plants in their industrial yards. But I really need help from the city of Dawson Creek. So, so some of the best practices that are covered in there are pressure washing your equipment, removing seeds from your shoes, that person with the shoes there that's full of seeds, and portable steam cleaners. And then work with us and learn as much as you can about invasive plants. The Peace River Regional District is hosting municipal workshop on November seventh and we would like everybody to come. I have a special guest coming up from Vancouver, Bill Hewitt. He was involved in creating this local government toolkit for invasive plant management. I sent a link. Hopefully that's in your notes somewhere. What we, what we really need to do is work together. I have twenty thousand private landowners that I need to work with to get them to control invasive plants. Fort St. John has a pretty good bylaw and program there. The Bylaw Officers Association of British Columbia will be having me come in the spring as a guest speaker to teach the bylaw officers about invasive plants and how to keep them out of your municipalities. So there's a few exciting things going on. And to close, I just want to say Dawson Creek is the heart of the region and the regional district appeals to you to help us manage invasive plants, keep the environment pristine for our children and grandchildren to come. We are not defined only by what we create, but by what we refuse to destroy.
Thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome. Do you want me to answer questions or shall I vacate?
So yeah, is there any questions for Elaine? Counselor Parslow?
Well, yes, the quote you ended with is, whose quote is that? Defined by, we're not only defined by what we create, but what we refuse to destroy?
I, I would have to look that up and get back to you.
It's an interesting quote. It's not a challenge at all. It's just a curiosity question.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I mean, living in, I live in the Peace River Regional District, so, and I do see a lot of these plants that you're referring to. There's, there are some plants that I have that I'm not sure if they're, if they are what you would call invasive, you know what I mean, like bladder campion. Is that?
Yeah.
That is, yeah. So I don't know, I little, I don't know if you've never come up with a little, a book that, or brochure that has all the species and photo, color photographs of them?
Yes, it does.
Good.
And it's got, this is our strategic plan and Darcy Perrin here from the city sits on this with us. It's reviewed every year, plants are added. There's pictures, there's treatment recommendations and identification tools throughout here. And because we never get enough money to treat everything, we categorize every, into three. Category A, which are critical to control. Like we do have napweed here, but we only have twenty-six sites. So we work very hard to keep those smaller infestations under, you know, intense management. Category B are those such as the creeping thistle and setless chamomile that are pretty much everywhere, but we still want to protect our social, economic, and environmental values. So where those plants are threatening those values, we do our best to treat those. And then the third category is those plants that are really plagues to the agriculture industry, such as green foxtail. It's actually a native, but it is a big plague to the agriculture industry. So we offer, you know, support to people who want to control it, mostly for education category C. So it's all done. It's all ready for you.
One supplementary, if I may, just to, and so all the treatment that you, is environmentally friendly?
We use integrated pest management for our treatments. So, such as the burdock, there's, there's really no point in spraying it with herbicide. We do manual treatments and pop out the rosettes with a shovel. The setless chamomile, for the most part, we pick it. We, we spray some areas early in the spring, the larger infestations, to try and keep them down. But there, there is only one of me. It's very difficult for me to be everywhere. So I need your help.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden?
That brochure you have there with, yeah, the city, the Darcy Parks and Recs have a copy of that, do they?
Absolutely. It's on the Peace River Regional District under the environmental tab.
On the website. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a link to that on our website?
I don't know the answer to that, your worship.
Certainly helpful information, absolutely, in terms of creating that education awareness and helping any of us to be able to control some of those noxious plants. Elaine, thank you so much for your presentation this morning. We sincerely appreciate it. And as I say, absolutely for us, the education, the awareness, the understanding for our community is critical as we see some of these things go on within our boundaries.
Yeah, they're very aggressive and lots of times we don't even realize what we have until we're, it's almost too late. So, thank you for having me. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Wilber?
I just want to get back to you. Had just asked if it was on the website and I'm just wondering if maybe we shouldn't set direction to verify that it is on our website. just wondering if maybe we shouldn't set direction to verify that it is on our website, and if not, to put that tab there.
Sure. Thank you. Next delegation, six-three is Corinza Medhurst and Neelam Minhas from the Canadian Cancer Society. In attendance, we, the Cancer Society's Public Policy Priorities and Benefits Associated with the Implementation of an Outdoor Tobacco Bylaw. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have a presentation that I wanted to...
All right.
You need Tyra's finger again, probably.
So, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and present to you today. So, I'm here to present about outdoor smoking bylaws. And, hm. Hm. I guess I can stand and announce it if I have to. Okay, I'm going to stand and just advance it manually, I guess. Thank you very much. Okay. So, my name is Corinza Medhurst, and I'm here from the Canadian Cancer Society. I am based in Prince George, but it is a regional position, so I serve the entire northern region. So, the outline for the presentation, I want to talk a little bit about radon, the health impact of tobacco use, environmental and economic impacts, some evidence that smoking outdoor bylaws work, and some ideas for best practices for your community. So, just to start, we do know that about half of all cancers can be prevented through healthy living policies and healthy, that can protect the health of everybody. We do know that public education and healthy policies are the best way to prevent cancer. And we do have a special focus on protection of children, especially. So, a little bit about radon gas. Radon gas is a known carcinogen, and it's the leading cause of lung cancer in non-smokers, and the second leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. It is naturally occurring, it's the result of the decay of uranium and rocks and soil, and we do know that there is radon gas throughout the northern region. And we are very much in the preliminary, we are very much in the preliminary, ah, area of working together. So, we're partnering right now with BC Lung, with Northern Health, with the Fraser Basin Council to really work on an awareness campaign around radon, and we're really hoping that municipalities will partner with us on that work. So, radon's found all over Canada, and our position is that if radon concentrations are above two hundred bickrels per meter or less, that you are okay within your home, but if it's higher than that, that people should take actions quickly in order to reduce, reduce. And that's in line with Health Canada's guidelines. But in other parts of the world, they actually have lower guidelines than that as well. So, here's just a couple ways that local government could support us. Display information, where people come for building permits and/or pay taxes. Sell test kits, support dissemination of information to staff, and support dissemination of information to the residents. And now, on to tobacco, which is the main part of my presentation. So, that was mostly information, but for tobacco, I definitely have a very specific request we're looking for. So, to start with, the health impact. So, children who grow up in smoke-free communities are less likely to use tobacco as adults. Children often don't have the control over whether or not they are exposed, so it's up to us, adults, to protect children from exposure to secondhand smoke. Every year in B.C., there's at least a hundred and ten deaths in non-smokers, and we do know that exposure outdoors is just as dangerous as exposure indoors in close proximity. And I think, thanks to provincial legislation in B.C., we're really protected indoors, but where most of us do get exposed unwontingly now is outside. And I know for myself in Prince George, when I go to Fort George Park where a lot of community events are held, I, we have outdoor movies, and I'll sit down with my kids and put out the popcorn and the blanket, and somebody will sit right beside us and light up a cigarette. So, we'll pack up the popcorn and we'll move to another spot, and, you know, at some point, you either are the mean mother that leaves early, or you put up with the exposure to secondhand smoke. And I know that similarly in Dawson Creek around Rotary Lake, that there's been some similar complaints of people being exposed in quite close proximity. It's, you know, it really does feel like I'm sitting in a nightclub sometimes when people are all around me at the beach. So, environmental impacts, there is a real cost environmentally and economically to litter and the toxic litter in parks and playgrounds, and it's a major concern worldwide. There's also an economic impact. Usually, two-thirds of outdoor litter in most municipalities is tobacco-related, as well as there's a huge cost to cleaning that up, as well as tobacco kills more than six thousand British Colombians each year. So, the B.C. economy, there's two-point-three million dollars is tobacco-related costs for healthcare. And outdoor smoking bylaws work? So, the Canadian Cancer Society is a research-based organization, so, smoking bans have been proven to reduce people's exposure and also are very effective means for protecting children and youth. So, it's a sound public policy that increases motivation for smokers to quit or cut back, it models smoke-free living for children and youth, and denormalizes smoking behavior, as well as decreases tobacco-related waste, and ensures healthy outdoor areas for people. We do know that the support for, we've done a lot, there's many municipalities in B.C. and in the country that have adopted smoke-free bylaws, and support from, I mean, the majority of any citizens are non-smokers, and the support for the bylaw has actually gone up among smokers after it has been enacted. People have maybe been fearful beforehand, but they've been very much in support when polled afterwards. So, so, you know, and we do know that over seventy-five percent of current smokers are planning to quit in the near future, and they actually welcome opportunities to decrease their smokers, their smoking. In Woodstock, for example, when we did a poll afterwards, thirty-eight percent said the bylaw helped them quit, forty percent said it helped them to stay a non-smoker, and thirty-three percent of people who smoked said they cut down the number of cigarettes they smoke. And so, it's really about, again, we like to focus on protecting children. Thirty-two percent say they smoke less around children. So, there's lots of benefits for every community. You know, a smoke-free bylaw provides a healthy opportu, you know, really gives a nice, healthy image for future generations. In two thousand and twelve, UBCM made a resolution to officially endorse smoke-free outdoor public places, so we were really hoping the provincial legislature, provincial government would take action. But our current government has, is under the impression that it really is a municipal concern, and that it's the municipal government that they'd like to see take action in this area. And here are the communities that have already enacted smoke-free bylaws in B.C., and there's many in Alberta and also across the country. But there's large and small communities in the north. Prince George, as well as Terrace, have recently voted to enact a bylaw. So, there's a lot of energy and support. And I've just noticed a real big difference. I've been with the Cancer Society since two thousand and seven, and the difference just in the, the general feeling of the general public around smoking legislation has really just shifted, and we're really seeing next to no resistance, and most people really don't, really are quite surprised that people can still smoke in close proximity to children. So, typically, we'd like to see all city-managed properties, trails, plazas, parks, beaches, and recreation facilities, bars and restaurant patios covered, although it's, you know, every community's different, so, you know, make it, make it fit your community, make it cover the areas that you think are important. You can also start small and start maybe really a couple playgrounds and see how that goes. And we can always expand to cover more areas, judging on what, how the people feel. Enforcement is something people always ask me about, but from all the community, I can put you in touch with other municipalities that have adapted these bylaws, they, there's, enforcement really has not been an issue at all. The education approach works, peer enforcement is, you know, very effective, and there's very, some, very little need for enforcement. As well, the Canadian Cancer Society is more than happy to support the education, education campaign as to why this is important, and we're also happy to support and cover some costs for signage for that to go out. And, so, we can work with you to work, to build on what other communities have worked on. We've worked with all thirty communities, so we can help avoid pitfalls and build on the real strengths and strong points of other communities. We can put you in touch with other communities of similar size and their experiences, and help develop a bylaw that works for you. And that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
There you go.
I'm blind, I'm blind. Thank you so much, Corinza. Is there any questions from Fort Councilor McFadden?
Good morning, thank you for coming in. Your slide about radon being a naturally, a natural chemical, I guess?
Natural occurring.
Yeah, is that also, is that a byproduct of any industrial activity that you're aware of?
It's a, breakdowns from, it's a breakdown, a byproduct from uranium, but it's not from industrial. No, it's naturally occurring, it's across the world. It's in different areas. We find a little bit less along coastal regions, but we have maps of where it occurs naturally and also where it's occurring in homes.
Thank you.
It's in small doses everywhere, but it's when it's in larger doses that it becomes a health concern.
Thank you. Councilor Parswell?
Yeah, it's been a lifelong non-smoker. I just do not like being around smoke, for sure secondhand smoke, or just even seeing it being smoked. It's sad commentary that I have stories and have seen homes where there's clouds of smoke and lots of young children, and it seems to me that we have a long way to go still. Not only that, but quite often, it's not tobacco smoke, it's marijuana smoke, or whatever you call that. This smoking, this ban on smoking, is it confined to tobacco smoking, or anything else that's being smoked?
I mean, for us at the Canadian Cancer Society, we don't have messaging around marijuana smoke because it's illegal, so, it becomes a legal issue for us. If that ever changes, then I'm sure we will have some messaging around that. So, we're focused on, I mean, smoking marijuana in public is illegal. So, right now, we are focused on the tobacco.
Should it become legal? Is there research about the impacts of that on people's health, such as cancer?
I mean, certainly, there's tar, there's certainly not the same level of toxic carcinogenic materials within it, but there is health concerns being breathing in.
Yeah, noting, thank you.
Councilor Malkinson?
Good morning, thank you very much for your presentation, Corinza. I, you spoke in your presentation about, I suppose, sort of a gradual implementation of this bylaw in other communities. You were saying maybe on, in specific areas, I think, some school, some school zones first, and then other areas as well? Have you, have you seen a lot of implementation like that, sort of a gradual change into the?
You know, we have that open as, the only place that I think that I can think of that, most places, I mean, we say that that is a great way to start, but most municipalities have just enacted the ban. I think there's widespread support in most places. A few places where we've noticed that in larger parks, what they've done is just done the playgrounds and then had a few designated smoking areas. Because of larger parks, it's not quite as easy, you know, with larger trail systems where it's not easy for people to enter and exit.
That's right, that's right.
So, that's why, make, what makes sense for any community, you don't want to do something that is...
I have been, I suppose it's, I have been curious about smoking bans in the last couple of months, I suppose, maybe initiated by some of the complaints that we've had about Rotary Lake and, among other places in town, but I had the advice that I have sought on it from some of the people in town. I remember speaking to one of the local doctors, and he was suggesting that a gradual change is often the, the best way to implement something like that, to limit pushback, but like you say, pushback is often, well, people sometimes see it as a, as just, you know, the progression, you know, that it's becoming less and less, well, smoking is becoming less proliferated, well, you know, the proliferation of smoking is, it's not as prominent, let's say that. What was the other question I had, though? Enforcement, I suppose. I think that there's a concern amongst people about the actual enforcement. You said that it hasn't been much of an issue for many of the municipalities who have enacted I, in conversations with people just recently, you know, I have realized that with any bylaw that you do implement, that enforcement of the provisions are necessary. It's, but you can reiterate that it's not much of an issue?
Yes, and I'd be happy for you, to put you in touch with, say, Kamloops or other communities that have enacted the bylaw for several years now, and that you can chat with them, that they're very happy with the bylaw, they haven't had much issue at all with enforcement. And I think for me, I mean, as somebody that's a mother that's at a playground, somebody smoking, and I can just say, "Excuse me, do you know, see, you know, the smoking is not allowed here." Right now, if I'm there, I have no, I could say, "Could you please not smoke around my child?" But there's nothing, there's no, people can say, "Yeah, well..."
That's right.
So, a lot of it, for most people, when they see the signage, most people comply. I mean, there's lots of cases of seatbelt legislation, the cellphone legis, I mean, they're really hard to enforce, yet you find that a lot of people really do, the majority of people will comply, and happily comply, and especially when you're focusing on children.
Yeah.
Councilor Parswell?
Yeah, just, it would seem, obviously, this suggestion is around public property. My mind's wandering, it seems to be rather hypocritical of us if we enact this, and yet, when we're providing public funds to support events held on private property, that we do nothing. If you've got any examples at all, or any reflections, examples from other municipalities where their funding support is tied to this sort of ban, or what are your personal reflections on that?
I think that's, I mean, an excellent idea. I actually, that's the first I've heard of that kind of idea. I think most of, mostly, we, most municipalities I've worked with have been focused on those public events that are usually on public property and public parks. That's certainly something that could...
We certainly support some public events held on private property, and I'm just ever concerned about that. If we do the one without the other, it seems, seems an inconsistent approach.
Be a good demonstration of principle, I guess.
Any further questions? Corinza, thanks so much for attending this morning, we appreciate it, appreciate the information, and the dialogue, obviously, and so, we'll bring it back under our follow-up for that conversation and discussion on council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item six-four, six-point-four is Alan Cameron in delegation, representing the Dawson Creek Family Friendly Events Committee, are in attendance this morning to request council's support to decorate the NAR caboose for the Christmas season. Morning, sweetie, how are you?
She's the Halloween, the Halloween mascot. What, I'd like to thank council and mayor for allowing us, and this is one of our representatives, and we have a committee, the Dawson Creek Community Events.
Family friendly, family friendly events, it's new.
Yeah, and all these people, you probably recognize them, are active in it, and we would like to stage four events a year. What we do now is we have the Halloween Spookarama, we're going to have, at Pioneer Village, we have the Easter Extravaganza that we have at Encana Center, and we'd like to do something for Christmas, and we'd also like to do a, that'll be... Christmas, and we'd also like to do a, that'll be our next venture, we were gonna try it this year, but running Dawson Creek Festival, we have quite a bit of interest, and I know our mayor would like to be on our committee, so.
I've been, I've been trying to find you.
I know you have, but I've been avoiding you, but I'm not anymore because I need something going here. So I won't be long, because I know Ryan's wants to get in here, and basically what we're looking for, with your permission to use the NAR caboose, I wanna call it the Blue Goose Caboose, but it was a bit of a vision we had a few years ago with the tourism, and we wanted to expand a little Christmas venue around there, and when I, on my trips, I seen a Blue Goose Caboose in Endemere that had movies shining on it and all this kind of stuff, so we all talked about it, we thought it'd be a great idea, it's sitting there, we wouldn't do any damage to the caboose, we would do an outdoor nativity scene in some event themes outside, we would put some lights inside and just, it's basically all volunteer stuff, and there'd be no, shall we say, the city would not have to be liable for anything, or if they steal decorations or if somebody takes extension court, it'll still be it, we get another one, and...
Don't say that too loud.
Well, you were gonna supply that.
I might just want an extension for it for Christmas.
But that is our basic venue, just to start something down there, and on that, if there's any questions, feel free to throw at us, and...
Thank you, Al. Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, well, it's good work, great work you guys do, and I just question, I guess, around Christmas, I mean, around that time of the year, there's a lot of, you know, in a multi, from a multi-faith perspective, there are other things celebrated, and as we want to be an inclusive community, how are you going to reach out to the non-Christian community?
I'm not quite sure.
Well, it's the people of the Jewish faith or the Hindu faith, they don't, they have other celebrations around that time of the year, like Hanukkah and so on? Just a reflection, don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you've got an illustrious committee, they'll reflect on it, but I just like to see multi-faith things wherever possible. The other thing is to staff. Once upon a time, when I was president of the Northern BC Winter Games, and we tried to decorate the caboose, we were informed by one member of council, which I assumed that, in my naivety at that time, was speaking on behalf of council, that we couldn't do that. Is there some bylaw or direction that because of the historic nature of the caboose or something that we're not allowed to decorate it?
Through your worship, I'm not aware of that. I'd love to talk to whichever councillor that was.
Ex-councillor, I will tell you the name privately, but we were told that it, or maybe they were representing historical society, I mean, I'll share that with you, but something we need to consider.
I'd be surprised, given we sit out as an ice cream stall for a number of years.
Yeah, and they, like, the cabooses and cars, they, yeah, there's many, many, many of them, they're, you can buy them on sale, all this type of stuff, so I don't think that'd be a big problem. On your, your other venue, one of a different face, I mean, we've had Christmas parties at Seddon Hall and other fields, and we've had everywhere from atheists, everybody, they've always come to them, so I don't think, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, unless you're, we're grabbing at one solid faith, I don't think that would be a big problem, I can't see it, I...
I don't think we're targeting any specific faith, we were just doing an event at that time of year that would be open for public.
Councillor?
The reason I said that was the mention of the nativity scene. I just know the school system, of course, now must be inclusive of all faith traditions and, yeah, anyway, thank you.
Councillor Parslow, our focus is family-friendly, not faith-based events.
Yes, but as I said, it's...
So Halloween is a pagan event, and that's the next one coming up, and no religion.
Everybody feel free to go right after your turn.
Councillor, Councillor Malkinson.
So you were hoping to decorate the inside of the caboose, where, and you say that you're, well, the committee is obviously oriented around events, you were hoping to have some sort of an event at the caboose or some sort of, well, some opportunity for the people to come inside of the caboose?
Yeah, we, we would put like lights inside a tree and smaller, and so they could see them through the window, you know, reflection, and if it was, as there's no heat or anything in it, but weather's decent, we'd maybe have a visit from Santa, if council and Fadden is available, I mean, just those kinds of small events.
Yeah, on a regular basis.
It's all a very small key, just the building sits vacant every time you drive by, I mean, you come around that corner, and I'm sitting in with my advisors at Robin's Donuts, you know, why don't we utilize this more?
Councillor Wilbur?
Actually, when I read this, I was, I got excited, because you guys do a wonderful job. I like thoroughly enjoy your Easter celebration, I'm looking forward to this spooky Halloween thing coming on, and I really see this as an enhancement to our wonderful Christmas tree, Councillor Parslow, that we have downtown all season, and I do, I do, I'm just saying, I do believe that we do participate in celebrating this season, and I see this truly as an addition to the season in our community, so I'm saying, let's do it.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? So thank you so much, we'll bring it back for motion of council.
Thank you.
We appreciate your, again, everything that you guys have done for our communities.
They're great much.
Yeah. Bye, sweetie. Thank you for coming to council. Thank you for dropping by.
She says you will.
Are you gonna shake the mayor's hand? He's a hugger. He's a hugger.
He's a hugger, careful. Thank you for coming to the mayor.
She's very glad to be here. Your worship, I would, I move that we recess for ten minutes.
Recession for ten? We have one more delegation.
One more? Okay.
This could be a lone delegation.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Ryan.
Ten minutes.
Okay, we'll recess for five quick minutes.
Sounds good.
Mr. McIver won't be long. Call back to order, our next delegation this morning, item six point five, is Ryan McIver, Ryan McIver, GM from Global Spectrum Facility Management at the Encana Event Center, and Mr. Dean Clark, the Regional VP of Global Spectrum Facility Management. How I read the 2014 event business outlook and also the introduction of our Regional Vice President. So welcome, you guys, to council this morning, appreciate your coming, and so over to you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Thank you. Through your worship, we, today for you, one is a press release that we're going to circulate for you, but then also have Dean walk through a bit of his background and also what the 2014 sort of future sort of looks for us within the, the calendar. So it's great news today that the Encana Event Center has named the second top spot in Canada, and Brent's just handing out the press release, that Global Spectrum Facility Management Operators in the Encana Event Center is proud to announce that venues today, a national venue trade magazine, is named in their September issue, that the Encana Event Center is the second top spot in Canada for venues between 2001 and 5,000 capacity. As you can see in the press release, that the venue ahead of us is in the eastern part of Canada, and that of interest is, is that there are three buildings that are in the top five that are all global spec, global spectrum facility managed, and as well as, and I'm sorry to say, Mr. Clark, that we beat you from the South Okanagan Event Center, so anyway.
I kinda knew that was coming.
So anyways, I, the, the press release is here, and we'll be sending it out to all the media, but I wanted to make sure that as our first stop today is to pass on the congratulations to you and share with you that we are, you know, first in Western Canada and second in Canada, so I think it's, it's just another great news story that compounds on top of being the fourth top spot in the Pacific Northwest. So I think it's, it's, like I say, another good news story that things are moving forward in a, in a very positive direction from, from the booking point of view. With that, as some of you previously have met Mike Scanlon, who was the Regional Vice President for our region, and with some shaping around, Mike was from the East Coast and had a number of buildings, but I guess a couple of months ago, a bit of reorganization and shuffle, and the company announced Dean Clark as the Regional Vice President and is based out of Penticton and is the General Manager of the South Okanagan Event Center and the Penticton Trade Convention Center. Dean?
Your worship, thank you for having me here this morning, and it's a pleasure, again, to be in Dawson Creek. I know that, that our company loves to be a part of these expectations that we've exceeded with the event center, and I think your community should be very proud of that. I know that the profile that I believe the event center has created for Dawson Creek is exceptional, and the reputation is preceding itself, and the community is being tied to that reputation, and so I think it's, it's certainly changed the opinions of our company, the people in our industry, what the future is in the north. I think that the expectations were certainly not what, you know, when the first, the event center was envisioned. The event center has exceeded them tenfold, and I think that we're very proud of Ryan's team, and we're very proud of the relationship that we have with the city of Dawson Creek. My background, I have twenty-five years' experience, I'm Canadian, but from Ottawa, I worked with the Ottawa Senators for five years, I worked for the Toronto Maple Leafs for two years.
Couldn't get to the, couldn't make it to the flames?
Yeah, it was, it was difficult walking around the, the Air Canada Center with the Ottawa Senators hat on, they didn't appreciate that very much. Nineteen ninety-nine, moved out to, to Kelowna, opened up the WHL facility in, in Kelowna, worked for a company called RG Properties, we opened up our rec center in, in Kelowna, and we opened up the ECHL building in Victoria. Subsequently, in 2010, decided that after being embarrassed month after month with the events going to Global Spectrum, I decided I needed to switch teams, and moved myself and my family to Penticton, and now we're part of the Global Spectrum operations. Very proud to say that it's been an incredible success in Penticton, and regionally, Western Canada, the amount, the, the culture that we share in our company with sharing information has made our jobs so much easier and so much more fulfilling because we're in the know, and that's important to us. We know probably sooner when events are being booked throughout Western Canada than most of the other general managers. We know before they do that shows could be potentially going into their building, which seems somewhat ironic, but we're in a good position, and I'm very, very happy to be on this team. Speaking about 2014 and sort of the business outlook, it's, it's interesting. Our business is tied to the economy, as everyone knows. We see small growth with the economy. Certainly, our business is tied to the United States, as they go, we go, but our reputation is starting to precede itself in Canada. These smaller cities, this sort of northern outlook is, is creating a buzz through the community, so that's one of our focuses. So as far as the business is concerned and the economy, we see small growth and, but regionally, with our promoters and our partners, they've taken a different approach. They're extremely aggressive at this point in time. We've seen the companies staff up, and we've seen some of our business, the way we communicate with them inverted, where typically we were the ones making the phone calls, that we were the ones picking up the phone, dialing these people, they're phoning us, and that's, that's an inversion over the last eighteen months, and we see that increasing, not decreasing. The holds, the dates that we have on hold throughout 2014 are interesting, a lot of the major artists sort of bantered their dates throughout the last quarter in 2013 and moved them into 2014, so that's exciting, and that's why we've seen a few bookings now in the last quarter of this month with some of the artists that aren't quite majors anymore. And then we also see people vying for different dates in 2014. Again, a lot of interest, a lot of excitement around the industry. I don't want to set Ryan up, because a lot of these times, half of these shows will move away and move off just due to their schedule, the artists' schedules, but again, we see slow growth, we don't see signs of it stopping, and yet, our partners are being extremely aggressive, and that's the outlook for 2014. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to note the time.
You're doing wonderfully well. Councillor Parslow?
Welcome.
Thank you.
To meet you. Ryan gloated over the fact that the Encana Event Center came second and your place that you manage came fifth.
Fourth.
Was it? South Okanagan Event Center?
Yeah.
I would like to point out, and I have, I am leading to a question, because while you're here, may as well ask a question that I would otherwise be asking Ryan, that you have seven events at the, the number of shows, sorry, at the South Okanagan Event Center in Penticton was seven. It's interesting that the, if I divide that number into the total gross, you beat Brian, Ryan, for every show, in other words, if Ryan had met your performance, I'm being a bit facetious here.
I see that.
You wouldn't, we would have had gross sales here of 1.1 million dollars in excess, so if we twist things around, I would put you above Ryan, if you follow me.
I follow you, yeah.
But the question, a serious question, is, there's quite a difference there in the number of shows. What is it about the South Okanagan Event Center that you only have seven shows, whereas here we have twenty? What causes that?
Ninety-nine, when I first got here, there was four places in all of BC to play, and that was it. There was Prince George, essentially, Kamloops, Kelowna, and the coast, and now their market share has increased, or decreased for each city, in fact, there are a number of event centers. I think bold decisions for people and communities that have built event centers. I think the Encana's Event Center is a bold decision, the, the regional people who decided to put this in this community was a bold decision. I think it was the same for Penticton as well, it was a bold decision. Our, our competition, which I used to be the General Manager of, is established over fourteen years with the leading promoter and regional promoters in the industry is thirty-two minutes up the road, just like your competition is an hour up the road. So these are decisions that, that, that were made, and, and we need, we compete against these people, we're competing within the same, same markets. Sixty-eight percent of our guests that come to my facility do not live in my, do not live in our catchment, they come from Kelowna. You know, we're the thorn in their side, there's no doubt about it, and, and that's why we don't see as many events. It, it's, it's, it's down to tradition, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to argue with tradition and relationships and friendships, but with that said, we have been aggressive. I think Global Spectrum, when they first started in all of these communities, when it starts with Abbotsford, Penticton, and here in Dawson Creek, we were very aggressive. We had a business plan that was to entice the promoter... We had a business plan that was to entice the promoters, and it's worked. I think it's worked more so here. I think there's a better relationship with Live Nation established through Ryan's group than there is in, let's say, at my facility. But that, I think, has a lot to do with the relationship that has been cultivated over 14 years with the facility in Kelowna. So I think that there's also a much more diverse and younger market in Dawson, and my market is very specific. The demographic of our market is specific to classic rock and country. For us to do pop shows, or for us to do hard rock shows, or electronic dance music shows, what we call them EDMs, it's a challenge, and we only do those shows if we're significantly ahead of budget, and we're looking to explore that and test the market and see how it does. And lots of times, we don't do well in those shows, and so we shy away and we focus on what our strengths are.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
So you guys, I just want to add that, you know, this community made a decision a long, long time ago, not that long ago, but a while back, to build and invest in a significant facility in this community, and it was a bold...
It was.
...kind of step for this community and region to move forward with. And, you know, to me, I think about it from three perspectives that we could, you could say, "We just can't do it anymore, and we lock her down." We could say, "We're going to have a modified facility," or "We're going to say, we're going to continue to try and ensure that we have a significant facility with significant events adding to this community over the long term." And I said it, Ryan didn't change it for me, but when he asked me for my quote into the news release, I didn't want "great," I wanted "amazing," because I think it's amazing for our community to be able to continue to leverage this kind of attraction for our entire region, and it is regional, and that's the success of it, I think, in terms of being regional. So I just really want to say how much, from my own perspective, that we need to continue to enhance and support and appreciate that facility, that event that we have bringing into our community, the type of reputation that it does to our community. You can't measure reputation sometimes. It's difficult to put a metric on it in terms of saying, "What does that mean to our community" when you try to measure what that means? But I think it means that we're developing a reputation across the province, and certainly in Northern British Columbia, that people are going to come here because of the Encana Event Center. We need to do all we can to continue to ensure we don't take that for granted, because that's when somebody else will come in and start eating your lunch, and we will be having a different discussion at some point. So I appreciate you guys coming this morning.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you giving us some time, and I think Charlie's metric on Penticton is perhaps right on one hand, but if you look at the metric of total gross per event, we're probably eating Montreal guy's lunch.
Absolutely.
I can't do the math that fast, so we should, we should be actually the top spot in Canada based on reputation of average revenue per event.
I like the way you think.
I have just four copies within the trade publication. I just took all the Canadian side out, and I just made four copies for you guys.
Thanks very much, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Want a hug?
Item 6.6, we have fat delegation Judy Lokey as an attendance regarding the request to purchase a walkway. Good morning, Judy.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good. I have pictures, which I took yesterday. I think pictures say more than 1,000 words.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will introduce them to you. I live at 1525 113th Avenue, just down the opposite avenue. Sue likely uses the 17th Avenue as a more direct access to the places that she would like to travel to. I've lived in that residence since 1976, when my husband and I built the home in which we have lived. My request to you is to purchase the walkway of 10 feet, which exists between our property and 1521 113th Avenue. The pictures that you see are pictures of the property at 1521 113th Avenue. Now, the residents in that property are not the owners of that property. They actually are living in their mother's home. The mother passed away in 2010, and the estate has not been settled. There has been a lot of disagreement among the family members as to who should have ownership of that home. In three years' time, that property has gone from an immaculate yard to the clutter that you see in those pictures. And what you don't actually see in those pictures are other vehicles that will occupy that yard at any one time, and that includes a truck with a crane on it, an SUV, a pickup truck, a welding truck, a truck with a flatbed for carrying their skidoo's, motorhome, three, or pardon me, two beautiful Pyrenees dogs that are tied up on the back deck, often surrounded by their own feces, and I know that because the dogs have escaped, and I've brought them home and tied them back up on the back deck, and there is dog feces lying all over. I've picked up the garbage from the backyard, and I don't want to see their personal items increase and overflow onto the walkway. Those tenants in that property have put in a request to purchase half of that walkway. Those walkways, I believe, were intended to provide access to the schools. There's another walkway that exists on the property on the back alley from me, but that has been fenced off for many years. And then on 114th Avenue, there also is another walkway adjacent to the property, which is also 1525, and that also has been backed off. Our intent to purchase that walkway is to maintain it. We've maintained that walkway, we've grassed it in, mowed the lawn since we built the home and moved in in 1976. In addition, we plowed the back alley all the way to the, is it 16th or 16A Street? I forget what it is, because we need access to the back, to our garage and to park. And this year, we actually purchased a truckload of gravel to put in the back alley to reduce the amount of mud, because in spite of the city grader coming through, we still needed more gravel, so we purchased that out of our own pocket. So I really think that City Council needs to take a good, hard look to decide if, in fact, they do want to sell that walkway, and when they do, who they want to sell it to. You know, my background is from a rural community in Southern Alberta, and for much of my life, I grew up in a coal drafty house that was built at the turn of the century. No running water, no indoor plumbing, no telephone. Often in winters when the power went out, we had a coal or wood burning stove, and we lived by kerosene light. I really appreciate the luxury of having a bathtub and actually being able to fill it full of water without running out of hot water, or water, period. I appreciate the fact that somebody comes by every Friday and picks up my garbage. I really appreciate the luxury of those items to this day. And my concern is that the clutter in that yard will just continue to increase, and I really want you to take a good, hard look at who you decide, if you do decide that you would like to sell that walkway. We have no intention of putting any buildings on it. We would just maintain it as it is. It enhances our lot because it makes it a little bigger lot, so if future owners, whoever they may be down the road, may decide that they want to put in a garden or have a little bit more space, so be it. We would not block it off. If anybody wanted to walk through that property, it's up to their own discretion, even if council decides not to sell it to either one of us. But I want to, it brings to mind that I also included a picture of a property which is on the other side of 1521, and that's typical of the property in the neighborhood. The yards are well-maintained, quite immaculate, no clutter, no debris, you know. I don't care how many vehicles somebody has. That's their own personal choice, but I think it should be kept in an orderly manner there. And I also think that a leopard doesn't change its spots, and in three years, I haven't seen an improvement, and I can only see that property to continue to degrade itself and decrease the value of the surrounding properties there. But I want to keep my property up as best as I can, and hopefully somewhere in the future, I will get the true value of it when I do decide to sell. But keep in mind, if one of that happens, just watch me in the words of Pierre Trudeau. I'll make sure that property's tidy.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Do we have any questions? Councillor Parslow?
Yes, just what was the address of...
That's 1521 113th Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Drive down the back alley one day.
Further questions?
So Jim, do you want to explain our process, the business, the policy of selling city property?
Yes, so, well, any disposal of assets requires an advertisement of your intention, and it requires you to get fair market value. There's a specific policy on walkways, which as Mrs. Lokey is referencing, indicates that in the event you decide after a public input process, if you decide to sell the property, that you will in fact offer each neighbor half of the walkway. That's the, that's the process in your policy.
So in conjunction with that, we are having a transportation plan that's being reviewed currently as we speak, which, would that incorporate some of this policy of walkways?
Through you, your worship, the consultants working on the transportation master plan are looking, as part of their work at pedestrian movements, and so they're looking at whether there is a necessity for many of these walkways or not. So it wouldn't by itself affect your policy. I think the recommendation from it may well be to be more lenient in disposing of these walkways than you have in the past, but then you would still have to do the work of changing the policy.
Sure. Okay. So we appreciate your attendance this morning, and we absolutely will bring it back under Mayor's business and move it forward.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, that ends our item six under delegations. Thank you, everyone. Moving back onto the agenda, we're at item 7.3.
We dealt with...
We dealt with 7.3, sorry. Item 7.4, the report number 13234, Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. Councillor Malkinson?
I move that report number 13-234 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development permit application for BC Hydro and Power Authority for 2400 Hart Highway be received, and that development permit number 13-28 for the placement of a light industrial building at 2400 Hart Highway be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the financial security.
Seconded by Councillor McFadden. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item 7.5, report from the Director of Corporate Administration in regards to their request to purchase the walkway by Rick and Judy Lokey. Councillor Parslow?
It's move the, that report number 13-235 from the Director of Corporate Administration be received. Further, that the request from Rick and Judy Lokey to purchase the walkway adjacent to the east of their property at 1525 113th Avenue be referred to Boulevard Transportation Group for consideration within the city's master transportation plan.
Thank you, Councillor Parslow. Seconded by Councillor Wilbur. Discussion? Councillor Wilbur?
This just brings mine to me, so through you, your worship, to staff, during our city master transportation plan, are we also looking at other walkways that potentially have been blocked off by fences or being used by property owners? I mean, it is city property, so I'm just wondering, are we accounting for all of them, or is this going to be piecework that we put in as it comes forward?
Through you, your worship, there's two answers to that. General pedestrian movement is already being looked at. The reason for referring this one is your policy says you won't close walkways that are integral to pedestrian movement, regardless of whether the neighbors wish it. And so this one is specifically being referred to transport, or to Boulevard in case they are making a recommendation about the pedestrian movement in that area on the walkways. It's the old, "Don't tear up the," or "Don't pave the road when you're going to be putting in a sewer line a year later." It may well be that there is a specific recommendation about that area that we just don't know about yet, so we wanted that opinion before we, before council considered it. None of which changes the current policy. If it's determined it's not integral, you have this policy that says firstly, there's a $500 application fee, that $500 pays for the newspaper ads, the signage, the public outreach. The policy says the applicant, so in this case, either the Lokeys alone, or the Lokeys and the neighbors, have to pay for a independent valuation of the value of the walkway. They also have to pay for the full surveying and land transfer cost, and they have to pay you fair market value. Looking at land values in that area, the totality of that expense, the $500 application fee, the independent assessor, the survey costs, and the value of the land, it's going to be somewhere around $10,000, either split between two or borne by one. So that would, and some of that's upfront cost. You wouldn't want the Lokeys or the Lokeys and another applicant to bear that cost if you're about to get a transportation master plan that says that's the single most important walkway in the entire city. That's all we're saying.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Yes, my question, I suppose, was partially answered. One of the applicants are just recent delegation, has paid the application fee and begun the process, however, the other applicant hasn't?
No, no. There's been no formal application.
Oh, okay, by either.
Councillor Wilbur?
I just want to add to that then. So what we're referring is just that section of the walkway, or are we referring the entire walkway to the master transportation plan? Because there are other portions of that walkway that have been fenced off, so we actually have other community members that have fenced off city property, fenced off the walkway that runs to Trempe School. So I guess what my question is, when we're referring it, are we referring that section, or are we referring the whole walkway? Because I would like to see the whole walkway referred and just deal with it at one point in time and not keep pieceworking it together. Thank you.
Will you start moving? Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, it's my assumption that we were dealing with the walkway, because to just deal with a little section of it, yeah. So is that your understanding?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Report 7.6, report number 13233 from the Director, Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding our 2014 council meeting schedule. Moved by Councillor McFadden, seconded by Councillor Malkinson. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item 7.7, the report number 13236 from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, read the 2013 tax sale results. Councillor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report from our Deputy Chief Financial Officer about the tax sale results for information.
Moved by Councillor Malkinson, seconded by Councillor Kenny. Any further, any discussion? Councillor Malkinson?
Your worship, maybe I can get a better understanding of how exactly this process works. On a few properties, one, two, three, four, five properties were not purchased by any private person, and of course, had to be purchased by the city. There is a bearing on the corporation because of that, but I'm not certain how exactly that, how exactly that's, how it goes about, really.
Can I give it a go?
Do it? Well, sorry.
Five, so I sat in on the tax sale. Five or, I'm not, five or six of the properties came back to the city. We didn't receive any bids for them whatsoever, so the amount of taxes incurred to the city are now being, will be assumed by the city at the end of this year, if they're not redeemed. at the end of this year, if they're not redeemed.
In a full year.
And after a full year. The one property received a total bid of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, and it had about four thousand dollars in, or forty-eight hundred dollars in taxes accruing to the city. So at the end of the year, if the property owner does not redeem that amount to the city for that, uh, outstanding amount of forty-eight hundred, the property then reverts to the person who was the successful bidder. City gets their forty-eight hundred bucks and the old property owner gets the remaining twenty-four thousand bucks. The issue for the city, we need to understand, is that there was one property, the Wildcat Video Property of two hundred and twenty or two hundred and thirty grand, or whatever that number was. We need to book that money if it comes back to the city and isn't redeemed for that taxes. So that means, right now, we have two hundred and twenty grand owing to us, or two hundred and thirty grand. But the minute that property comes back to us next year, we have to find two hundred and thirty grand and budget that amount for ourselves. So, yeah, we get the property, but we also go to find two hundred and thirty grand worth of dough in our budget to offset that amount because it now becomes our property, so. Got it? Is that, how?
I, I appreciate.
I just wanted to just make sure I got administration and.
Absolutely.
I appreciate what you've said there, um, your worship, but, uh, I am just curious. You say that the, uh, property hasn't changed, uh, hands yet, that it is not owned by the city, even though we held an auction for it, uh, earlier this week. Or, sorry, earlier last week.
They have one year in which to redeem?
Okay, yep.
That amount, and then it becomes the city property.
Very good, okay. Because it went for auction for that. I understand that.
And that we pay interest to the person who wrote us a check for twenty-eight grand on that amount of money until such time as it's redeemed?
Neat. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. Any further questions?
You're welcome.
We have a motion?
There you go.
There you go. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Seven point eight, we have a report number one, three, two, three, seven, from the Deputy Director of Community Services. Read a temporary cattle holding area. Counselor Wilbur?
Get my name on something, I guess, today. I'll make the motion that report number thirteen dash two, three, seven, from Deputy Director of Community Services regarding a request from the Mile Zero Roping Club for a temporary cattle holding area be received. Further, that the staff be directed to prepare a temporary use permit in order to approve a cattle holding area located east of the Lakota Agriplex Warm-Up Ring. And further, that staff be directed to develop a lease agreement, including a five thousand dollar bond measures to protect the field and capability to bill for associated costs.
Moved by Counselor Wilbur, seconded by Counselor McFadden. Discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
I, uh, thank you, your worship. I did get the opportunity to read about some of the, uh, imple- uh, implications of, uh, going ahead with this request. And I think there are a few uncertainties that have been outlined in the report that, um, make me question whether or not I'll be able to support this resolution. Um, you know, notably, the, uh, concern about, uh, water supply to that, uh, part of the field uh, being able to be discussed at, uh, future date. And, uh, uh, that, among other things, I suppose to begin off, I'll, I'll ask a little bit more of a, uh, uh, direct question to staff, and that's, uh, about the, uh, well, it's about the financial implications. I'm reading here that, uh, if approved, staff recommends that the M O R C and the P C, P R C H A be responsible for all associated costs. Are there any, uh, are there any extra bearings that could, bearings on the corporation that could come out of that, or no?
Uh, well, through your worship, the biggest concern would be, um, uh, from a financial nature would be if we were required to do cleanup, for instance, over and above the bond. Uh, that would be an issue if, um, if the corporation is required to pick up utility costs. Uh, at the moment, you're, um, uh, you have a sharing deal with, uh, how utility costs are distributed within the larger multiplex. Uh, so that might require adjustment if there's significant new water or power use at this new facility. And, um, and you also have opportunity cost. The, uh, the area in question is used for parking during the fall fair and exhibition. So if this was to become, uh, year-round use, you would lose that parking. Uh, and that might mean you would have to find some other place for parking, so that could be an implication as well.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
Um, are these not issues that can be addressed, um, in the lease agreement?
Yes, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, let's let my memory, uh, refreshed. Uh, what were the reasons that the Dawson Creek Exhibition Association was not in agreement with the request?
Uh, through your worship, uh, this request originally came to you in March and council approved in a principle, subject to, uh, staff reporting back on issues such as the leases between the groups at the Exhibition Association. And at that time, the, uh, preferred location for Stables and Arena was an area, um, adjacent to the old riding arena in, uh, within the fairgrounds rather than this location. Uh, the Exa- Dawson Creek and District Exhibition Association wouldn't, uh, agree to that request. Uh, they preferred that the, um, holding area be moved to what is, uh, generally referred to as the midway area. But they also wanted significant capital improvements done before that they would agree to that. So our, um, our report to you in July, I think it was, said, it just looks like that preferred location can't be worked out, that there's no deal between the various leaseholders, which is what leads to this request. The Stables and Arena have come back with a new location where those crossover lease, uh, provisions don't occur and where there's no requirement for a sign-off from the Exhibition Association.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Parslow?
Hey, Dane, I, um, if you have this, uh, fine, but it seems to me, well, if the Dawson Creek Exhibition Association identified needs for some capital work to be done, um, that was not covered in the proposal, uh, do you know what that, the nature of that work was and why, why the people who are asking for this can get away without doing it with the Lakota, uh, land that they're going to use?
Uh, yes, through your worship, the, uh, position of the Dawson Creek and District Exhibition Association was that, uh, the cattle would be, um, too disruptive to the turf conditions and that, uh, a better solution would be to place them on a paved lot, which is where the expense was going to come from. It was going to be to pave the midway area. Now, it's hard to tell whether that was a genuine concern about damage that yearling cattle can, um, uh, can cause or whether it was a seized opportunity for the paving of the midway area, which has been on the wish list for the Exhibition Association for a great many years.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I, I am not going to vote, uh, in favor of this. I don't believe, uh, that this is a sustainable solution, given the water situation, that, uh, they're going to haul water. I can foresee that, uh, I'd rather have a, a more, what's the word, consolidated position as it relates to the, the water haulage, or, oh, sorry, the water situation, that there could be some things coming along here which just add to our expenses. Certainly, I, 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 I don't like the visual optics of this, uh, either, as it relates to the location, so I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, Counselor Parslow. Any further discussion? You ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. So item eight, first item is our bylaws, eight point one, report number one, three, two, two, nine, from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our permissive tax exemption bylaw number four, eight, four, one, eight, nine. Counselor Malkinson?
Move that, uh, we receive this report from our Chief Financial Officer regarding the permissive tax exemption, uh, bylaw. And that, uh, permissive, permissive tax exemption bylaw number four, one, eight, nine, twenty thirteen, be given first three readings. And, uh, further, that staff be directed to publish the required notice as required under section two, two, seven, uh, subsection one of the community charter.
Thank you, Counselor Malkinson. Do I have a second, or Counselor Wilbur? Do we have discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Yes, just a bit of history first. Uh, multiplex was on the permissive exemption in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and it was removed per B C assessment, uh, city facility. So what was it, uh, identified as before?
Uh, through your worship, the, uh, initial ruling from B C assessment when the facility opened was that the lease arrangements, one with Global Spectrum, one with Dawson Creek, uh, District Stables and Arena Association, uh, captured the, uh, property as taxable. And, uh, with, absent a permissive exemption, the city would have had to pay itself taxes on the building, uh, specifically because of the lease. So that's, that happened for two years, uh, or three, that you gave permissive exemptions. B C assessment reviewed that and said, you know, that decision was probably an error because it's not, um, being leased for commercial purposes, it's being leased for, to be run as a city facility. And, uh, so they, uh, restored it to full exemption, the same way this building is exempt.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Just, uh, just, no, I, I think I'm going to make another motion after this one's dealt with, so.
Any further discussion? So for the benefit of the public who are watching, this is approximately three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety. In tax exemption, we provide.
Three hundred and eleven, actually, I think.
No, sorry.
All told.
That the city provides tax exemption to those facilities in the community that either meet that criteria for B C assessment as a house of worship or others that we actually provide that permissive tax exemption for, that the city, uh, makes that decision on. And so it's a significant amount of money that, um, the city brings forward, both through legislation under permissive tax exemption for houses of worship or for our own, uh, purposes in, for those facilities within our community. Correct?
Yes, through your worship, just, uh, point of clarification. The statutory places of worship that show up, the forty-five thousand dollars that shows up as Schedule A, are areas the B C assessment authority would allow you to tax, but you've decided not to.
Okay.
Uh, that's, uh, over and above the main exemption for the places of worship. These are the areas where a portion of the, um, facility, such as a parking lot or a portion of the time, such as the use of a hall for a wedding, are not, uh, related to worship. So the entirety of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars is permissive. Council could choose or not choose.
Thank you. Any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, my, uh, discussions and research on this, it seems that we, we, uh, are way out of line uh, from the norm in this province in this regard. By that, I mean, the, the percentage of permissive tax exemptions as a, as a, as a percentage of the total is vastly significantly higher than, uh, pretty well all comparative communities. And that we are one of the few municipalities that does not have a policy that guides this. So I would like to move that, that staff develop for council a policy on permissive tax exemptions, uh, with reference, uh, and guided, be guided by, um, reference communities that we use when we deal with tax matters.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or for the motion? Counselor Wilbur? Discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
So when Counselor Parslow says, uh, uh, I, I mean comparable communities when we're, uh, looking at taxes, are you saying that, uh, you're hoping that, hoping that the guidance for staff be, uh, um, best practices in communities that we compare, uh, our tax rates to? Are you, are you suggesting possibly a, a big change here, or?
Uh, in response to that, uh, the Chief Financial Officer, in her work with presentations to council, references a number of communities that, uh, staff has determined are comparable, i.e. size, uh, nature of community.
Yeah.
Um, that, um, I would, uh, be asked, and staff, uh, often makes comparison to our rates with those. So I think that would be a useful reference group. But I would also expect staff, if they felt that, uh, we needed to ensnare a bigger group, uh, that's fine. But, uh, I don't know. I don't know what the permissive tax rates of those, uh, communities such as Terrace and so on is. I do know from information that's been shared with me that, uh, relative to the province and other communities, some of which are very similar in size. Yes, it would be a, a significant change. But if we're going to be serious about dealing with the fiscal matters that this city faces, we have to look at all avenues. And in that regard, I a hundred and ten percent support the Chief Administrative Officer.
Counselor Parslow, thank you. Any further discussion? You know, I'm going to add just one piece to that because through the evolution of governance, you set policy that clicks away over time. And sometimes council will make a, a certain decision in a given point in time in regards to a specific incident or a specific, specific situation that all of a sudden incorporates into your policy. And so I, I think it's really incumbent upon us, and it's really healthy for us, to be able to review some of those policies on an ongoing basis, just to look at them, as I think Counselor Parslow has indicated, from my view, just to look at it and say, is this prudent policy for us in today's world, given the situation and the, uh, specifics of where we're at? So I, I completely endorse and support the idea of having that review take place.
In this instance, we don't have a policy, we have a practice that's unfettered, it seems, by any policy.
You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Thank you. So item nine, the favorite part of the agenda for me.
We still have fees and charges, eight, two.
What's that?
Fees and charges.
No, I want to do mayor's business.
No, you, you've got to follow the order. You mean, gee, with, not hugging me and hugging others, and now you want to change the agenda.
I'm not listening to him anymore. I want to do mayor's business. Counselor McFadden?
Moving things right along, your worship. Recommend that report number thirteen, two, two, seven, from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration re-fees and charges amendment bylaw number four, one, eight, eight, twenty thirteen, be received. And further, that fees and charges amendment bylaw number four, one, eight, eight, twenty thirteen, be given first three readings.
Thank you, Counselor McFadden. Do I have a second?
You're welcome.
Counselor Wilbur? Is there any discussion?
It's good housekeep, housekeeping, if I can use that expression here.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Now to the favorite part of the agenda for all of us. I know I speak on behalf of all of us. Mayor's business. So we have a couple of items, uh, from earlier today in regards to our delegations. Uh, the first item we'll move to is six point two, Elaine Armagost from the Peace River Regional District in regards to noxious weeds. I think there was a request there for us to, um, add or do something separate from, uh, and include in our bylaws. And Jim, I'll pass it on to you. Is there anything we need to do with that?
Uh, through your worship, I believe the request was that, um, as opposed to your current maintenance bylaw, which speaks to the height of vegetation, I think the request was that you would, um, investigate establishing a noxious weed bylaw of your own and undertake the enforcement of that.
Okay. What's the will of council? Counselor Malkinson?
I, I remember the, one of the recent meetings that we had that, uh, uh, possibly there was a report from our, uh, Community Services Director that stated that some of the, um, some of the, uh, practices that we have, uh, around, uh, weed control and, uh, I, I believe it was weed control in our community, aren't necessarily compliant with our policy. We were going to be looking at some, uh, uh, recommendations about that. Am I, uh, am I correct when I say that?
Uh, through your worship, I don't recall that. We do have our own, uh, integrated, um, pest management, um, bylaw, or, uh, policy and practice. And, um, we do work cooperatively with the Peace River Regional District on our own lands. Uh, so I believe that's not the area of concern for the Peace River Regional District. I believe their area of concern. I believe their area of concern is private facilities, privately owned land, which is not, they have no jurisdiction over, because they can't regulate within our boundaries that we have no regulation on. I don't think their concern is the public spaces. I think weeds are being noxious, and weeds and invasive plants are being properly handled with, on our public properties.
Do I have a will of council for a motion?
Well, I'm, obviously, we don't want City of Dawson Creek to be a source for these weed, weeds, but I am also concerned, again, is this another thing that we take on that will have costs associated with it? And until I know what those costs are, I'm not prepared to make any motion.
So I absolutely like the fact that we create awareness, we create education, we have the toolkits available to enhance people's understanding of what some of those bad, bad plants are that invade our community and invade our private property, and how we can be more effective in, in destroying or eliminating them, or minimizing their impact. And I think any one of us who have fought Canada Thistle, or the creeping thistle, or whatever, all of those things are so difficult, but I agree, I just worry about, every time we make a policy, every time we pass a bylaw to incorporate that, it adds our costs, and we have to be aware and conscious of that. Constable Kenny?
Could we just perhaps direct staff to put the, the information on our website? Just make reference on our website? That booklet that was provided this morning?
Thank you.
Yeah, through your worship, we will certainly do that. You'll see the booklet itself that carries the city logo, because residents, taxpayers in Dawson Creek contribute to the regional function, and so we are a partner in the educational efforts.
Thank you. So everybody, council good with that? Do we need a motion for it?
That could be our response to the request.
Okay. You moving that?
I'll second if she moved it.
Perfect. Thank you. Moved by Constable Kenny, seconded by Constable Malkinson. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Next item, we had Corenta Methurst from the Canadian Cancer Society looking for us to consider moving forward with the implementation of an outdoor tobacco bylaw. Constable Wilbur?
It's, as of late, and I guess this past summer, it's become a huge concern in the community, because we're getting more and more letters about smoking at Rotary Lake, that kind of stuff. And the delegation had mentioned that they were willing to work with us on maybe forming some sort of a bylaw, or helping us gather the information from other communities. And I wondered, maybe we shouldn't also just direct staff to work with them to gather that information, so we know what we're looking at for a bylaw? And I see it being costly to enforce, but I think at the same time, if they're willing to help with signage and help us build that so that it works for the whole community, I think it would be a positive step forward, because it definitely is becoming an issue.
Moved by Constable Wilbur, seconded by Constable Malkinson. Discussion? Constable Parslow?
I'm not quite sure what's being suggested here, but that's essentially that staff work with Canadian Cancer Society to, to do what, again, to repeat what?
To gather the information from them in forming a bylaw?
Okay. My, my question, I guess, to, to staff would be that if we develop a bylaw, we have an obligation to enforce it. The difficulty with this sort of bylaw is, I believe, whilst there may be a significant number of people who will voluntarily, you know, it would be helpful, there will be others, I know, it's already happened, when they've been requested to put out their cigarettes, feel that's their right to smoke it, Rotary Lake as an example. And so it seems silly, I mean, I agree with this, I just abhor smoking of all sorts, that if we're not prepared to enforce it, why do it? It's like, why have speed signs if we're not going to have some enforcement? And so, again, I would, whilst I believe the motion is proposed by law, we could discuss it, I suppose, further, once there is a proposed bylaw, but are we, are we, are we willing to put more work on our bylaw offices at the, now or down the road? That's a big question for me, and I don't know where I stand on it, but certainly I would love that all public places and all publicly supported events be smoke-free.
Constable Wilbur? And Constable Malkinson?
It is my understanding that we kind of run on a complaint basis, so correct me if I'm wrong. So if someone complains, then the bylaw's enforced because there's a complaint. Another thing that interests me from the delegation was that some communities have no smoking with a certain distance of playgrounds, they also have designated smoking areas. So I, I foresee this as not necessarily a win-win, but a workable situation within the community. And if we do truly run on a complaint-based bylaw, then it would only be enforced when complaints were made. So that's how I see the picture. Anyone can, if I'm wrong, let me know now.
Constable Malkinson?
I, I do appreciate what both of you have, have said. You know, we, we heard from the delegation this morning that enforcement hasn't been much trouble in most of the municipalities that have adopted bylaws that were, bylaws that were outlined to us, well, the bylaw that was out to us this morning, outlined to us this morning. Yeah, we heard that it was not much trouble, but, you know, this all can be outlined, I suppose, you know, the, the idea of the enforcement, you know, the possible costs of enforcement and the implications of heading in this sort of direction would be outlined in a report that Shaylee has moved that council agreed, well, that council directs staff to write up. But I just suppose on the larger issue, which is the bylaw itself, I just want to enthusiastically mention my support for it. I think that it's appropriate, the appropriate direction for ourselves to head. It seems like, it seems like it's, yeah, the right way to go.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So for me, I have two, two kind of comments and that I, I'd like to add into it in terms of absolutely, I think all of us, healthy, community, smoking, we all get the aspect around that in terms of the unhealthy lifestyle decision, and it's an addiction and all of those things. So I'm a reformed smoker, and I'm, I'm done with it in my past. But there's, and sitting on the Northern Health Board for five or six years and knowing the healthy population strategic direction that they have, the smoking rates in the northeast of British Columbia are among the highest in the province. And the reason I believe that there are, there weren't any communities north of Kamloops on that list of the thirty or forty communities that the Canadian Cancer Society have is because of the incidence of smoking in the north are much higher than they are anywhere else, and so consequently, they get a little better take-up on the public's willingness and acceptance. And so the one component around this is if we have a bylaw that says outdoor smoking restriction, then we impact our business community in this community by their terraces and their patios. And I really think that's one more component to it that we need to consider and need to address, because it's a big issue for them and their business. So I just want to raise that as one aspect that we need to consider for those businesses. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or otherwise, it's just a consideration for those businesses, because they all have an outdoor patio in the restaurants and, in our hotels and all of that stuff. So I, I completely get it and understand it, and we just should consider it and understand the implications. Constable Kenny?
Yeah, I, I can see where with the businesses, the, the smoking rules of not smoking inside the establishment has really affected their business. But I would really support this when it comes to the children in the playgrounds and, and Rotary Lake. That's where I would like to see a bylaw that would, would at least, you know, help, help stop it a little bit. And, and I like the idea, you know, in the presentation, where when children are seeing people smoking, like in the playgrounds, like, well, anywhere, it influences their decision down the road whether they're going to smoke or whether they're not going to smoke. Some of them hate it so much from being around it that they'll, they'll never touch the stuff, but others might think it's cool, you know? So I think the whole thing of not, like, not having it in the playgrounds, I, I would really like to see something like that. Not make the decision right through the whole, the whole city and through the business establishments, but in the playgrounds, like the schools have done.
Yeah. Thank you. Any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Next item is item six point four. We had a delegation, Al Cameron, representing the Dawson Creek Family Friendly Events Committee, requesting to decorate the N A R caboose for the Christmas season. Do I have a motion? Constable Malkinson?
This is absent advice from our staff. Perhaps we ought to hear from our staff first on any arrangements that will need to be made with this Family Friendly Events Committee, before we agree in principle to going ahead with it.
Or assuming we're going to do that.
Yes, yes. That's right. That's right.
What?
Through your worship, staff have worked with this same committee on both Spook Fest and the Easter event seamlessly. We don't anticipate problems. And in terms of the facility, really, the only thing that occurs to me off the hop is that we might need to have some kind of separate event insurance for their activities. They may not be covered under our master policy, but that's a detail we can work on.
Because I felt it was a little, I apologize, but I felt it was a little unclear, maybe the, it didn't seem like they were proposing just one event, but to decorate the inside of it and have a couple of events as needed over the Christmas season? But I, I'm not sure. But I certainly agree to the idea of the decoration of the N A R station for Christmas by that committee in principle, and I'd like to move that.
Moved by Constable Malkinson, seconded by Constable Wilbur. Discussion? Constable Wilbur?
Just insurance, did they have to provide their own insurance for their Easter event or for the Halloween event that they're hosting?
Through your worship, the, in both cases, there, the, there's already insurance in place because of the facility. So we have insurance in place for Sueton Hall, we have insurance in place for Encana Event Center. I don't know whether we have insurance in place for the caboose, that's all I'm saying. But I know it's not a huge item. The last time we confronted this with the Doggapalooza, it was fifty dollars for insurance. It's, this is not a huge money item we're talking about.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry.
Thank you.
Anything further from, yes?
Item five point five, is referred to mayor's business?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right. Thank you. So we need to consider the request for a representative on the South Dawson Creek Tourism, Northern B C Tourism Association, representing the City of Dawson Creek. Constable Parslow?
Yeah, just want to make a few comments about this. This item appeared strange to me on the agenda, because usually at council meetings, we discuss what we're trying to do from the point of view of liaison with groups and so on. And so I don't, I don't believe there was any discussion, you know, staff usually brings these things forward if we need to make appointments, or it comes through the mayor. But it did make me reflect as well on the notion of, you know, how we engage with our community. You know, we have, each of us has liaison functions, I believe. I think everyone carries some of that. And I'm wondering if at some future date, we should have a discussion around the various groups that we liaise with, whether we need to talk about, I think we need to talk about it, community advisory committees. But for me, I, I believe this person, Darcy, what's on water for me as a person and businessman, but I still strongly believe that as we spend a lot of money in this area, it occurs to me that this position should be filled by an elected official. And so I'd like to move that this position be filled by an elected official appointed by the mayor.
Seconded by Constable Malkinson? Discussion? Constable Malkinson?
I agree, I obviously agree, because I seconded it, but I agree with Constable Parslow. And there's a, I, I'm not certain of past practices on this, on this board, but it was my impression that council agreed to appoint Mr. Bud Powell after his, I believe, nine or twelve years of service on council, because, well, he, it was something that he had felt very passionate about, and he was able to, he was able to take part in wholeheartedly while he was on council. And seeing that come to a close, I, I think that it's appropriate to look at this appointment in that frame of mind again. And I suppose also, as somebody who doesn't know Mr. Dover, or the individual that's been mentioned in the recommendation that well, I don't find any, well, there's no argument here, no, no basis for me to agree to his appointment. You know, there's no, there's no actual reasoning why Mr. Dover ought to be, other than the fact that he's running, or he'll be in attendance at the A G M and running for a board of directors position, so.
Constable Kenny?
I, I agree with this motion. Because like, yeah, Bud Powell, he, he continued to, to represent the city because of his background, and he'd been there, you know, there was things going on within the Tourism Association that there needed to be some continuity, and it was, I think it was a real good move for Bud to continue to sit in that seat. And I understand he still continues to be a presence in, with, with tourism in B C. But the political influence does, does matter on, on the Tourism Association. And though Darcy, I think, would be wonderful as far as a representative of business and, and the contribution, the tourism dollars to, to business in our community, he, he can come at it from that angle. But I still think that we still need that political influence, and so I would support that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So I, I watched a news report the other day on C J D C T V wherein they interviewed Bud about the declaration of the Alaska Highway being commemorated as tourist, I can't remember exactly the designation, but they were working on. And so the meeting was being held in Fort St. John, our neighbors to the north, and so I guess from my perspective, I'm wondering, and I'm still getting, I'm still evolving these, these council appointments to the liaison committees, and I'm sorting that out in my mind over the last couple of weeks. But I absolutely think we need to jack up our presence and our involvement in how we are represented as the City of Dawson Creek and the Northern B C Tourism Association. And it knocks me over how we could have the Alaska Highway, of which Dawson Creek is mile zero of the Alaska Highway, and meeting is going on in the north, only because I'm assuming that's where the offices of, are of the regional office of the Northern B C Tourism Association. And so that just knocks me over that that happens, and I think we need to be more energetic about what we do.
I agree.
Constable Kenny?
Well, I, we have been pretty energetic, I think, you know?
It might be my own, my own.
Well, we have, we have tourism Dawson Creek, and like, we were ahead of the game, we have been ahead of the game for years as far as, as, as our influence on what's happening with the Alaska Highway and everything. A lot of that work and energy, you know, it started through the Northern Rockies Alaska Highway Tourist Association, but Dawson Creek had wonderful representation on there. Alaska Highway Tourist Association, but Dawson Creek had wonderful representation on there. And, and worked, did I say Tumblr Ridge?
No.
Okay, thank goodness. But, you know, the City of Dawson Creek, you know, they have put the money out there in order to support tourism and have, have, they have the Alaska Highway House. And, you know, we, we have been really, I think, the number one pillar in keeping, keeping the whole movement going, declaring the Alaska Highway as a heritage highway. So you can be proud to be from the City of Dawson Creek and what we've done for tourism, but we need to continue.
I always am proud to be from Dawson Creek.
I know.
And it might be my own lack of knowledge about what takes place in it, and it obviously is. I was just surprised when I saw it. Anyway, Councillor Parslow?
I apologize. Just a, just an end to his question there. When you saw Bud Powell speaking in Fort St. John about the dedication of the Alaska Highway, is that specific?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Councillor Parslow?
Well, yeah. I, notwithstanding what Councillor Kenny said, I took your comments in a different way. So maybe Sue's interpretation is correct, mine's wrong. I, I took your comment as a more general statement when you said we need to be more energetic. My perception, as it relates to some other councils, is that they have, they certainly do all they can in the way of lobbying, and I'm not saying we don't do it. This is no criticism at all, but I think that we need to recognize we're often in a competition with others. Let's take this infrastructure money. Now, I think we've got a little bit of a start there. A, because through staff and council's decisions, we've got, we've got a thorough study of our sewage where we're ready to roll. We were in a good position there. But I'm just saying in general, we need to recognize that there's a lot of activity going on in some areas, often led by staff and often though led or supported in a very active way by elected officials. And I'm just saying, this area of tourism, a lot of money has been put into this. We do contribute a significant amount of money. And I think in our fiduciary responsibilities to our general public, we should not delegate that to lay a person out of the elected capacity, notwithstanding that I'm not being critical of the decision to put Bud Powell in for continuity. This is now that he is no longer in that position, that we assume it amongst ourselves through the mayor.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry, thank you. So I said it for Mayor's Business?
If you say so.
Well, it's not quite, because I got a couple things. I got a couple tings. And for this, so this, for me, having now completed two weeks, I'm still the new guy. And I've had a couple of weeks of on the job training. It's been unbelievable. And so my absolute thanks go out to council over the last four or five months of sitting in the chair and enacting mayor's role. And you get the appreciation of how busy a community can be and the role of the mayor is. And so I just, I'm going to run through very quickly a little bit of the activities I've been involved in over the last couple of weeks, more to inform council in terms of some of the things that I've been attending and absolutely what I want to continue to move forward with. Right out of the gate after the swearing in ceremony was up to Fort Hudson Hope, and I attended the RLGC meeting with B.C. Hydro on Site C and the update from them on the activities of what they're doing and updating the local elected folks in that. Now, I know absolutely that a lot of the procurement stuff is going on now in preparation for it. There has been no, no position taken by any of the, well, I don't think anyway, of the councils, either in Dawson Creek or in the region, either supporting or opposing Site C. To me, this is about information that we need to be aware of, understand what's going on in our community and our area. And certainly I want to be able to do that and ensure that as it develops, as it unfolds, that we are informed on the activities that are taking place in our region as it relates to a significant project. And one of the guys that's involved in it, I know we've all heard his name, is Dave Conway, is the regional manager for Hydro. And Dave and I, Dave worked for me in my old role with ICBC, so I had a really good opportunity to update Dave and catch, catch up to Dave. And certainly I'm going to encourage and engage that relationship as it moves forward, just so we make sure we stay involved in the process for not only our community and citizens, but the business community as well. I attended my first piece of a regional district meeting on the 26th, and that was very informative for me in terms of getting into that cycle of our business of our regional representation and understanding how that's unfolding. Sue asked me if I would sit in on, last Friday, on the Northern Development Initiative Trust Regional Advisory Committee meeting. I'm finding that very, very interesting, and I'm looking forward to getting more involved in that with Sue in terms of understanding the implications for our community and the Northern Development Initiative Trust and the opportunities that may be available to us and/or our community, business partners and service groups and volunteer groups, to be able to make sure we look for every opportunity as I'm sure has happened to leverage that in the future. I had a very brief discussion with Wendy from the SPCA last week in regards to their contract renewal coming up in 2014. One of the things that I'm really surprised at, a little bit frustrated with in terms of the City of Dawson Creek having, packing this, the South Peace SPCA, a huge, huge passion for me in terms of ensuring not only our babies are safe, but our pets are safe and have a safe environment for them. That's just, to me, a passion. So the, the South Peace SPCA, providing services of animal control and all of that stuff for pets in our area, and the City of Dawson Creek now is packing it almost on our own without any financial support from any of the regional district or Puscoopy or any Chapman or Tumblr Ridge. Tumblr Ridge were involved, but now are no longer. And I'm going to, I'm going to say that from my perspective. There's a support that we're providing as a community that's being utilized regionally, and we need to have that support to ensure that that service continues in the long term. On Tuesday last week, we had Mike Bernier, the MLI, organized a caucus tour of the region. And we had a number of the liberal MLAs and a couple cabinet ministers. Mike invited me to attend and join in for the day. It was hosted by Encana. We did an orientation in the morning and then went out to a rig, walked around on the deck of the rig while it was drilling and the pipe was going into the ground. And for those people in the lower mainland and the cabinet ministers, some of them to actually see that, witness that, almost touch and hold, it was very, very powerful in terms of being able to demonstrate that. So I thought it was very well done. Then we went to a compressor site, add to a plant, the Spectra Energy Plant. You know, and for me, just quickly for the public, and there was an announcement this morning that Prime Minister Harper was in Malaysia, and the Malaysian prime minister, who's the Patronus, is the, is the state-owned, Malaysian state-owned company that went through a huge amount of controversy buying Progress Energy that was held up by the federal government and finally released. They announced thirty-six billion dollars for the development of an LNG plant and a pipeline in northern British Columbia. So it's significant what's going on. To me, when you see that kind of activity in our region, it was powerful, powerful to have the MLAs and the, and the ministers see that. I took the opportunity, Amrit Verk, Minister of Advanced Education, was here, so I really took the opportunity to support Mike and his efforts to ensure we do all we can to promote and, and try to see the development of that Skills Trade Center building that Northern Lakes College are trying to have accomplished for our community. So I talked to the minister about it, and I know he was going for a tour of the facility. So anytime we get that opportunity, I think it's just very, very worthwhile to be able to take advantage of it. Wednesday morning, I met with Connie Patterson, the World Professional Chuck Wagon Association President, and just to talk about that probably one of, not isn't, probably is, the largest single event that has, occurs in our community in the course of a year. And so I just am going to be a real advocate on behalf of ensuring that we do all we can from my position as the mayor to ensure we support that event going on for another ninety years and work with them to ensure that we seize every opportunity that we can to ensure the success of the exhibition, the fair and the rodeo and all of that. So it was very worthwhile to meet with Connie and the president of the association just to talk about the plants and issues and opportunities and those types of things. And then we had, back here on the third, we had the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers here gave us a council presentation for a couple of hours, talking about the things that are going on with the industry in the northeast and the province of British Columbia. I thought it was very worthwhile to be able to hear from those industry representatives and the aspects of how they can work with us as a local government in terms of making those connections and understanding the issues that are facing industry and communities and infrastructure and development and all of those things. I found it very helpful. Anything that increases that understanding and awareness and education for us, I think benefits certainly me personally in terms of understanding what we need to do as a community. The afternoon was a great, great afternoon to have the Lieutenant Governor of British Columbia, Judith Gashawn, here. And we, as we planned that visit with the Lieutenant Governor, we had a brief meet and greet with council and then off to the Cole Frank Ross, where she spent about forty-five minutes with students and the staff there. It was amazing to see the kids interacting with the Lieutenant Governor and the questions and comments and the interaction. It was really, really good. And then we took the opportunity, I was going to, Lieutenant Governor's got an agricultural background coming from the Nicola Valley and South Kamloops and the Merritt area. And it was really, I was thinking about how beneficial it might be for her to go, the harvest season's underway in the region, and for her to be able to see that take place. But, you know, we leveraged the opportunity that she was here to go to a plant. And so we took her to a gas processing plant, Murphy Oil. Wes Tupper took her for a tour of the plant, give her the overview. There was a, there was a drilling rig on one side of the road just before the plant. There was a fracking operation on the other side of the road. So for her to see that drilling operation go on and a fracking operation and the amount of intensity and equipment and activity, and then to go for a tour of the plant, she just was really overwhelmed by the opportunity to see that. And again, same thing, it was just a really, really positive afternoon. That night I went to, on the third, I went to the Peace Energy Lodge, Open House in Puscoopy and support our community just to our neighboring borders. And I met two or three contacts there as the mayor, and I'm going to be meeting with one of them tomorrow, who's looking at developing an opportunity in the northeast and in Dawson Creek. And I'm meeting with them tomorrow to expand on that discussion and conversation. And I should say also, on the caucus tour with the MLI, I met with Richard Dunn, the Vice President of Encana, who's extended an invitation to me to get now to Calgary. And he's going to get me to all of the representatives of his peer group in the industry in Calgary. And I'm just going to notify council, I sincerely want to make that trip as soon as I can to ensure that we make that connection as the new mayor and council to those industry representatives in Calgary, because I think we're on the verge of some significant things. And we talked about the shore water. I want to engage those industry folks in our conversation about what's going on in our community, and I'm going to make that trip as soon as possible. And I just want to advise council that I intend to do that. Friday night, Councillor Parslow, Kenny, Wilbur, Malkinson, Schuman. There was only one that wasn't there.
I missed a memo, I guess.
Friday night, we had the, attended the celebration, the thirtieth anniversary of the celebration of the art gallery. And it was really, really a great evening and very well attended. So I appreciate everybody going and really nice evening to be there on behalf of the county of the city to offer our congratulations to them. So that's been two weeks, folks. It's been amazing. Councillor Parslow?
Well, you've had a good beginning, good for you. And just some of the things you've said prompted something I think's important. You know, you talked about the SPCA and support. Just, staff will be able to give you the details on this, but one of, as you pursue that broader and justified need for support from other communities for SPCA, the, we need, this city needs to go after the regional district for stronger support for its recreation programs. I think there are some calculations which get into the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we should be, for fair support, that's just a flagrant. And it's good that you did have that opportunity because some of the things I heard in my travels to Fort St. John and with Councillor Wilbur, a meeting at George Dawson Inn on Wednesday evening, you know, you get these visiting dignitaries, and they go to Fort St. John, and they get the impression that, for instance, that the Fort St. John campus for Northern Lakes College is the trade center for the college. And your work there countered that very effectively in the fact that, you know, the welding, training, et cetera, et cetera, happens here. And I know for a few of the politicians, that was an illumination to them. The shore water, yeah, I'm glad you're doing that as well. And what you said there prompted that part of my discussion with the IMP was again around, or a major part of that was around shore water. And some of the things that have been said to him, which do not jibe with the facts of the situation, and so he needs to be kept up to date on our shore water work and the capacity that we have through the work of past councils and this council and staff around shore water. And so he's, he's very open, I believe, but I mean, as people talk to him, he gets one side of the, of the issue, but not the broad issue. So that, I just wanted to mention that. So the trades training, the recreation support for, from the regional district, and keeping the IMP up to date on shore water issues.
Thank you. So that concludes Mayor's Business. Favorite part of the agenda for all? Diary? Nothing new on the diary version. Consent calendar? No items. Strategic priorities chart? Nothing new on the strategic priorities chart version. Question and answer period? No one signed up, your version? Media que, oh. No committee of the whole, your worship? And so that puts you to media question. Media question period?
I've got two questions.
Jill Earl from the Northeast News?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Has raised the motion under Mayor's Business regarding item five, the tourism Dawson Creek? Did you appoint someone or what was the motion being?
So the motion is that we're going to appoint someone from council. A representative from council, it'd be an elected official, elected representative, and I'll do that.
You will appoint someone?
Yeah.
Okay. And when is the strategic priorities meeting?
So right now, we've got the traditional timetable of budgeting starts very soon, and then the strategic planning exercise would be in December. And so that's part of my kind of view of the role of mayor. So I really want to do some work, and I plan to do some work on that strategic planning exercise, and then I'll engage council in some conversation and discussion and administration in terms of the timetable and how we're going to frame that.
I thought that you had said that you had set the meeting already, so.
There's a date set for, in December, and so we'll have that as a conversation in the coming months.
Eighteenth through seventeenth?
Yeah. So thanks for the memories, everybody. We're going to recess to the close. Appreciate everybody coming today. Councillor Malkinson?
I move that we go to the closed portion of the meeting.
Seconded by Councillor Wilbur. All those in favor, opposed, it's Kerry, thank you.